Uh-oh, you don't want to give me this. It belongs to somebody else. I'm not giving it up. I'm taking hostages.
Yeah, I just say, as a big deal.
Thank you for saying that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh-oh, you don't want to give me this. It belongs to somebody else. I'm not giving it up. I'm taking hostages.
Never used it. Never liked it.
I never used it.
I didn't really be interested in what it was.
You know, the Kelly Buck's today's going to be my November book haul. To be honest, I picked those up before Hall.
There we go. In case something like that happens again.
Okay, we are about ready to begin. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedures as amended and adopted June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. Okay, would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to have a moment of silence, but we're going to dedicate this night's moment of silence to Lewiston and all that they have been through. So would you please join me for that moment of silence? And now for roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurleye?
Present.
Councilor Stackpole?
Present.
Councilor Hanselman?
Present.
Councilor Martell?
Present.
Councilor Trench-Montane?
Present.
Councilor Hitchcock?
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink and also present our City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts. And if you were wondering why sometimes we are late coming in here, even though we are scheduled for six o'clock, we almost always have an executive session beforehand. And some of us are very long-winded, so it takes us a little bit longer than normal sometime to come in. All right. Now, we're going to have the minutes in order to approve the minutes from the regular city councils meeting held October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion, please? Pete?
A motion to approve the minutes from September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Nate?
I'll second the motion.
And all those in favor? October, yeah. Order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion, please? Nate?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Pete?
I second.
Are you guys playing tag team down there tonight?
Just want to find out.
It's perfect. All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you. And now for the mayor's report. There's a couple of things I want to share, so give me just one moment. First of all, when we talked about Lewiston, I want to thank the Sanford PD. We sent a whole team up there to help Lewiston. And in other words, when you send a team up to help, other people have to step in and also fill in the gap that they leave. So I'd like to thank the whole Sanford PD for all the work that they did during that time and are still going up to help out when it's needed. And to let you know, we did send a letter to the mayor from myself and the city council. And this, I thought I'd read you the letter to share with you. Today is a very sad day in Maine, as we all thought we were safe from the events like what happened last night. Please know, all of us in Sanford are standing beside you and Lewiston during this tragedy. We all know that even after the person is arrested, there will be the aftermath of emotions. The aftermath of this tragedy will be longer than just a few days. There will be years of mourning for your community. Please know you are in our thoughts and our prayers. Our hearts ache for all of your families. Becky Brink, Mayor of Sanford. So I just wanted to let us not forget what's just happened in the state of Maine for the very first time. Now, moving ahead, knowing that we are now also entering a very stressful time in our lives, when we think about the two holidays that we have coming up, Thanksgiving and Christmas, it can be very hard on a lot of people. And so I think we just need to really take care of ourselves. And so I decided to become your therapist. So here are some suggestions that you might think through. Through all the endless parties, cooking, shopping, cleaning, trying to take care of yourself is probably something you need to really focus on, so that you can put up with your family and your relatives. So plan ahead. That's one of the first thing you need to do. Between coworkers, friends, families, it's inevitable that some comments will end up on, some commitments will end up on the same day. Make sure to plan on what you can attend in person or virtually. If you are hosting the holidays, create a menu to help you stay organized and make grocery shopping easier. And as the main cook in my family, sometimes preparing those two meals, one on Thanksgiving and one on Christmas, can be overwhelming. And I feel like somehow I let somebody down because I forgot somebody's favorite list. Comes the next step, too. Say no. That is very hard for some of us to do. With holiday commitments, it is okay to say no to a few or all of them. It is also, will help relieve some stress. Try sharing your to-do list with other family members. Okay, and Bill has just cut down his work hours at his office, so he doesn't realize I have a big to-do list for him. So this is probably, he's probably listening right now. Okay, step three. Plan spending. The holiday means spending money. Make a budget and stick to it. Spending money on your loved ones is important, but it is also important to pay your energy bill. Don't buy gifts that you will be paying off for the rest of the year. Stay within a budget. Number four. Create relaxing surroundings. This can be a challenge, especially for those of you who have little kids running around. Turn on some music, light some candles, or open the windows on a sunny day. Research has found that listening to music and the scent of citrus can boost feelings of well-being, and vitamin D is always a happy booster. So vitamin D is one thing that people in Maine are missing, because we don't have a whole lot of sun. And vitamin D for a lot of us who are getting older, vitamin D helps you process calcium and it helps your bones. So vitamin D is very important, not just to make you happier. Number five. Maintain healthy habits. This is hard to do during the holidays. The holidays are notorious for ruining healthy habits. A short workout each morning will help your decision-making throughout the day. Encourage your family to try snowshoeing, sledding, or to get some extra exercise. Also, it also gets them out of the house and out from under you. Eat healthy snacks like fruit, vegetables throughout the season, and to fill up before dinner parties, which is a key. If you go to a dinner party and you're really hungry, lots of times they serve appetizers first. Those usually are very fattening and unhealthy. So remember, if you go full, you'll do much better. Number six. Share feelings. Spending a holiday after a loss in a family can be difficult. Accepting your feelings and open up about them to others. It may make you feel better to share. Try to switch up old traditions, and that might also help ease the loss if you're not doing the same family traditions. Respect differences. Family members will have different viewpoints than your own. Hard to believe, isn't it? That we don't always all agree? Try your best to forgive and forget this holiday season. Focus on your similarities and replace tensions with something productive. That might be hard, because we don't all get along in our families. Be realistic. You are only one person and you can only do so much. Be realistic with how much you can handle this season. Forget about perfection and relax and enjoy the company surrounding you. Take a break. This is very hard, especially for some of us who are mothers and now grandmothers, we seem very, very busy. Don't forget about your own needs. Take a nap. Go for a short walk. Read a book. Watch a funny movie. Laugh. Laughing relaxes your whole body and can relieve physical tension and stress. Holidays are meant to be fun and enjoyable, so find ways to do this with friends and family. I'm hoping that these tips can help you make it through the next couple of months. Remember, friends are very important, family is very important. Okay, do we have, I don't think we had any subcommittees from the last meeting. All right, so I'm going to move right along to the city manager's report. This is Steve Buck, and he'll be doing that.
Thank you. So both of my reports are quite a bit of length to them this evening. I'll pull them up on the screen so people can view those here and at home. So I will summarize as best I can. I, too, want to start out with the mass casualty event in Lewiston that happened on October twenty-fifth. I remember that very plainly. It was my birthday. We were at dinner, and I left dinner that evening and got the first phone call from our police chief as to what was taking place there. Just letting the public be aware, and I know our chief is here this evening, he'll speak on this more in his presentation tonight, but our department was ultimately asked to provide our special response team. The team rolled at eight o'clock that night and headed for Lewiston. They were there for the first twelve-hour shift as part of the overall manhunt for suspect Robert Card. The team was also dispatched a second time on Friday, ten twenty-seven, for which Robert Card was found later that day at four thirty. Also of note, Sanford Police Officer Eric Ray, he is our FBI officer affiliated with the FBI. He was actually in Lewiston that day for task force training with the FBI. He remained there and became active as part of that response. We also had an off-duty Sanford Police Officer, Officer Eric Bilado, was there. He reported immediately upon learning of this to the police department, obtained equipment, and was assigned to the Central Maine Medical Center for which he provided security for the incoming patients as well as family members that were responding there to the medical center. So my hat goes off to those two officers that were there immediately and responded accordingly. Also, post the tragic event, members of Sanford's peer support team, Officer Everett Allen, Officer Adam Watson, and our licensed clinical social worker Shannon Bentley have also responded multiple times, providing support to both officers and other impacted public safety employees and members of the community as part of the coordinated response for counseling. Our fire chief responded immediately, asking whether we needed mutual aid for our ambulance departments or medics. The response to that was they were not needed, but we offered those services as well. So our community will continue to monitor Lewiston's need for support and provide that support as we can. The yellow flag law, there's a lot of discussion around that. There's an ongoing investigation wrapped around this case as to whether the yellow flag law should have been implemented, are they appropriate and such under that. I have a link in here. It's Title thirty-four B, Section thirty-eight sixty-two dash A. Under the Maine's yellow flag law, when a person is identified as a danger to themselves or others, notification to the police officer is made. The officer has to make an assessment to take that person into protective custody. They then order a mental health evaluation, and if the medical exam proves necessary, they then can apply to a court for an order to temporarily seize the guns and suspend their ability to purchase and/or carry. Under the state red flags laws, there's fewer steps to that. A person can, a person or relative can make or apply for an emergency order directly to the court, and if approved, the guns can be seized and temporarily removed until such time as the person's proved that they are no longer harmed to themselves or others. So I've received questions as to whether our community, our police department has utilized this before. We have, pursuant to the data sets that was provided by the Attorney General's Office. The Sanford Police Department is the second highest agency in the state, second only to the state police for invoking the yellow flag laws as of this past July, and we've invoked those since that period of time. I also noted a quote, our chief was quoted in the Bangor Daily News, that the yellow flag process often takes two to six hours. Timing depends on how busy the hospital is and when a judge can be reached. In other instances, police spend time trying to find someone who is avoiding police, which prevents them from starting the yellow flag process. So all of that was in play as it relates to the Lewiston situation. Something on a lighter note, there was vandalism on October twenty-third to our hydrant system. This is a new occurrence we haven't seen before. There was a minimum of two, excuse me, three individuals that were noted. They opened up several of our hydrants. Significant flow, about two hundred thousand gallons of water were lost in the thirty-eight to forty minutes that it took for the SCADA system to notify the water department. The event that was taking place, the rapid discharge, our public works responded in accordance with the water department to address damages that were out there. They did, there were witnesses to it, but they didn't get a plate number. And as of today, the police department is still investigating that occurrence. But we received this communication that's in the packet here from Keith LaBossa, the district engineer, thanking the city for the timely and rapid response in that situation. I have in the report an annual appeal for boards and committees. It's that time of year again. For those people that are interested in applying to or serving on any of these boards because of vacancies and or term, terms that have been hit, you can contact the city manager's office at three two four nine one seven three, or by email at sancommittees01@sanfordmain.org. Or you can go to our website at sanfordmain.org and apply directly there. There's a fillable document on the website for you to fill out. Openings are available for the Airport Advisory Committee. There's one opening to fill an unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one of twenty-five. Board of Appeals, we're looking for, there are four openings, each being for three years. And there's descriptions in there for each of these boards. The Board of Assessment and Review has three openings, each for three years. The Community Resilience has five openings, so this is a new committee that's being established to coordinate the community's approach to increasing resilience to natural hazards and climate change impacts. We received a sum of money that was assigned to our community unsolicited, and we have to have the Community Resilience Committee to make a decision on how best to utilize those federal funds. The Design Review Committee has one opening for a two-year term. The Land Bank Commission has one opening for a five-year term. Our land bank deals with the dangerous and hazardous structures within the community, those buildings that have other assessments, our vacant properties. They have dealt with the redevelopment and urban infill from these problematic properties, and the program has been quite successful. Planning Board has three openings, each of three-year terms. Recreation Advisory Board has four openings, each of a two-year term. Sanford Arts Commission has four openings for three-year terms. That's a newly formed committee focused on identifying and strengthening, promoting and broadcasting Sanford's cultural assets. You might note, take note that we've had Friday night art walks here for the last number of weeks. And the Sanford Housing Authority Board of Commissioners has one opening for a member-at-large for a three-year term. Trails Committee has up to seven openings, each for three-year terms, and two to fill unexpired terms. So again, five three-year terms and two unexpired terms expiring on twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Election results. Congratulations to our incumbents that are here this evening. For the three-year terms, you can see the record here. Incumbent Jonathan Martell was re-elected. Incumbent Sanford Deputy Mayor Moore Hurleye was re-elected, and Oliver Jones was the third-place receiver in there at one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven votes. For the one-year seat...
And hold on, I'd like to point, Oliver is in the back joining us, so thank you for taking the risk and running. That is a hard thing to do. I read the letter that you submitted, a wonderful letter. You are a great writer, so thank you for doing that. Thank you for being willing to risk. I see some great things in your future, so please stay involved. I appreciate you. Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
For the one-year seat, there were three people running. Victor Gorio had a thousand forty-eight. David Gomes got eight hundred and twenty, and technically incumbent Nathaniel Hitchcock received one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven, so congratulations. For school board, there were two positions running unopposed, two incumbents, Paula T. Cody and Amy Sivney were re-elected. The officer has to make an assessment to take that person into protective custody. They then order a mental health evaluation, and if the medical exam proves necessary, they then can apply to a court for an order to temporarily seize the guns and suspend their ability to purchase and/or carry. Under the state red flags laws, there's fewer steps to that. A person can, a person or relative can make or apply for an emergency order directly to the court, and if approved, the guns can be seized and temporarily removed until such time as the persons prove that they no longer are harmed to themselves or others. So I've received questions as to whether our community, our police department has utilized this before. We have, pursuant to the data sets, it was provided by the Attorney General's Office. The Sanford Police Department is the second highest agency in the state, second only to the state police for invoking the yellow flag laws as of this past July, and we've invoked those since that period of time. I also noted a quote, our chief was quoted in the Bangor Daily News, that the yellow flag process often takes two to six hours. Timing depends on how busy the hospital is and when a judge can be reached. In other instances, police spend time trying to find someone who is avoiding police, which prevents them from starting the yellow flag process. So all of that was in play as it relates to the Lewiston situation. Something on a lighter note, there was vandalism on October 23rd to our hydrant system. This is a new occurrence we haven't seen before. There was a minimum of two, excuse me, three individuals that were noted. They opened up several of our hydrants. Significant flow, about 200,000 gallons of water were lost in the 38 to 40 minutes that it took for the SCADA system to notify the water department. The event that was taking place, the rapid discharge. Our Public Works responded in accordance with the water department to address damages that were out there. They did, there were witnesses to it, but they didn't get a plate number. And as of today, the police department is still investigating that occurrence. But we received this communication that's in the packet here from Keith LaBassa, the district engineer, thanking the city for the timely and rapid response in that situation. I have in the report an annual appeal for boards and committees. It's that time of year again. For those people that are interested in applying to or serving on any of these boards because of vacancies and/or terms that have been hit, you can contact the city manager's office at 324-9173 or by email at sancommittees01@sanfordmaine.org. Or you can go to our website, sanfordmaine.org, and apply directly there. There's a fillable document on the website for you to fill out. Openings are available for the Airport Advisory Committee. There's one opening to fill, an unexpired term ending 12/31/25. Board of Appeals, we're looking for, there are four openings, each being for three years. And there's descriptions in there for each of these boards. The Board of Assessment and Review has three openings, each for three years. The Community Resilience has five openings, so this is a new committee that's being established to coordinate the community's approach to increasing resilience to natural hazards and climate change impacts. We received a sum of money that was assigned to our community unsolicited, and we have to have the Community Resilience Committee to make a decision on how best to utilize those federal funds. The Design Review Committee has one opening for a two-year term. The Lane Bank Commission has one opening for a five-year term. Our Lane Bank deals with the dangerous and hazardous structures within the community, those buildings that have other assessments, are vacant properties. They have dealt with the redevelopment and urban infill from these problematic properties, and the program has been quite successful. Planning Board has three openings, each of three-year terms. Recreation Advisory Board has four openings, each of a two-year term. Sanford Arts Commission has four openings for three-year terms. That's a newly formed committee focused on identifying and strengthening, promoting and broadcasting Sanford's cultural assets. You might note, take note that we've had Friday night art walks here for the last number of weeks. And the Sanford Housing Authority Board of Commissioners has one opening for a member-at-large for a three-year term. Trails Committee has up to seven openings, each for three-year terms, and two to fill unexpired terms. So again, five three-year terms and two unexpired terms expiring on 12/31/24. Election results, congratulations to our incumbents that are here this evening. For the three-year terms, you can see the record here. Incumbent Jonathan Martel was re-elected. Incumbent Sanford Deputy Mayor Moore Hurley was re-elected. And Oliver Jones was the third-place receiver in there at 1,877 votes. For the one-year seat-
And hold on, I'd like to point, Oliver is in the back joining us. So thank you for taking the risk and running. That is a hard thing to do. I read the letter that you submitted, a wonderful letter. You are a great writer, so thank you for doing that. Thank you for being willing to risk. I see some great things in your future, so please stay involved. I appreciate you. Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
For the one-year seat, there were three people running. Victor Gorio had 1,048, David Gomes got 820, and technically incumbent Nathaniel Hitchcock received 1,847, so congratulations. For School Board, there were two positions running unopposed, two incumbents, Paula T. Cody and Amy Sivney were re-elected. For the Sanford Water District, there was one position open. Incumbent Roland Cody was re-elected, and Roland's here tonight, congratulations. For the Sanford Sewer District, two incumbents were up for reelection, running unopposed. Both were re-elected, Keith Patterson and Nathaniel Hitchcock. So of the total registered votes-
Steve, could you just go back to where we have, Nate is also a counselor?
Yes.
And could you explain why he is allowed to serve on that committee?
Yes, absolutely. It is not a conflict between the City Council and the Sanford Sewage District. Both the Sanford Sewage Districts, excuse me, and Water District are both quasi-municipal entities. They have a separate charter all of their own. Both of those charters were approved by the state legislator that is independent and separate from the municipal governance.
Thank you.
So of our 15,704 registered voters, 4,261 people between day of and absentee ballots submitted votes, so we had a voter turnout of 27%. I didn't put the referendum questions, election results in here. Those are available on the website as well. Our city did not deviate from the outcome at the state level. We voted perhaps different percentages, but our yeses and nos absolutely mirrored those that I saw for the statewide election results. The last element I wanted to bring in here, I brought this in because at the homeless task force meeting that I'll report out on in just a moment, this past Monday, one of the topics of discussion was why are we seeing more economically displaced people? In other words, evictions and other aspects that have become homeless? Why are we seeing more of that now than what we've seen in the past? So the United Way of Maine participating in this nationwide report is called the ALIS Report. I would encourage anybody and everyone to click on this link, read this report. So I grew up in this industry, referring to this as the working poor. People that are working, one, two jobs, or two-income households, but they're having a tough time making ends meet. The ALIS Report, ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. It does an exceptionally strong job in defining households that have income that are above the federal poverty level but cannot afford the basic cost of living in their county, and it drills it down to the specific region. You can go in and click a ZIP code and look at what the ALIS rating is as a percentage here in those reports. So it calls out what the cost and does it regionally. You can click on by county, you can drill down to ZIP codes. It goes into the cost of housing, cost of food, transportation cost, all of that sort of deal, and defines for a single individual, a couple, and then a household comprised of husband and wife and two children, what those two costs are, all the way down to federal tax credits that go into the calculation. Because, for example, when Diane Small, the Sanford Housing Authority Director, talked about people that were receiving a federal voucher, a housing voucher, that's capped at 30% of their income, are not being able to make their payments because the other 70% of their income isn't supporting their basic needs. ALIS gets into defining that. So quick observations in here, when you look at the state, the state of Maine is ranked 30th in the nation as far as ALIS income levels, one being the lowest. In other words, the fewest people that are at or below that level. I found it interesting that Alaska is ranked number one and that our close neighbor, New Hampshire, is ranked number two. I made some observations about what New Hampshire does differently than what Maine does. I note, as a state, we have a 12% federal poverty level, and we have 30% of our population that are at or below the ALIS threshold for basic necessity in their needs. York County in comparison is at 8.8% poverty level and 31% ALIS below the threshold. Sanford has a 48% ALIS below the threshold, and Springvale has a 42%. So that gets into incomes versus the cost of living in the area. And I noted that for other comparisons, that Bitterford is at 50%, SOC was at 40%, Kennebunk is at 41%, Wells at 40%, and Kittery is at 46%. So there's a fairly substantial wide variation in there, and the large driver in there is, again, income versus housing is the biggest variation in costs that I see there. So even though Sanford has a very strong workforce here, our average median income has come up substantially over the last few years. In fact, we've surpassed that of Bitterford's now. But it's still very expensive to live here in the southern portion of the state. So we're going to continue to examine this more as far as these statistics are concerned. And I put in one page out of the executive summary, which really, if you look at this one page, really encapsulates all that we were talking about. And this is the example for the survival budget for Maine, as to what comprises that and what you need. So for an example, the single adult needs a bare minimum of $27,912 on a statewide average, which is $13.96 an hour. So when you have 30% of your population in Maine that are at that or below and not meeting their income, that gives you an indication of what we're talking about. So that's all I have for the manager's report.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. Any questions on that part of his report? All right, we'll move ahead to the homeless update.
So the homeless task force, we met recently, this past Monday. It was meeting number seven, again, standardizing the format. The first number that we look at is the asylum seekers. That was actually reported out the Thursday before. Currently, for asylum-seeking families that we have here in the community, we have two families that are in temporary housing within the community. We have 33 families that have been placed permanently. In other words, they're in apartments that comprises 126 people. Four families were housed permanently in an apartment in Lewiston for a total of 13 people. One family was housed in an apartment in Arundel comprised of six people. And we have two families that are in long-term host homes here in Sanford, representing four people. General Assistance has had several newly arriving immigrant non-asylum seekers having work and/or other visas as of late. That's a new trend we're just starting to experience. Vicky Martin, our General Assistance Director, recently represented the city at a regional meeting around the pending formation of the Office of New Mainers. Great pain from the Governor's Office of Innovation facilitated those regional meetings. Director Martin was able to express the lack of centralized database and related impacts upon General Assistance. Sheer volume of contacts as being a burden, and the financial burden is detrimentally impacting the office. There was a general consensus that General Assistance was not designed for this situation, that the state needs to take separate and independent actions to carry those forward. Further, the language barriers were also identified as difficult and burdensome, and the Office of New Mainers is being formed to address these types of impacts in the near future. So I know we have state legislators, I don't, I'm not aware that there's any funding that's been put to the Office of New Mainers yet, but they're trying to figure out the structure, I believe, as to what that looks like and put funding to it in the future. You will hear in our financial report tonight, we are on track for, if nothing changes, using our first-quarter numbers, of having gross expenditures this year of $1.2 million under General Assistance, which is just unheard of. And we'll talk about what those differences are and why. So looking at this particular category, the financial impacts, I note for the month of October, there was $75,359, or 74% of the monthly expenditures in General Assistance was assigned to the asylum-seeking families. Looking at average, the housing cost was $44,883, and food cost was $25,023, are the two largest areas of expenditures. We are currently, over this first fiscal quarter of the year, we have spent 3.2 times more on asylum-seeking families in General Assistance than we have on our resident population. And again, the numbers of the 1.2 million, as being projected, if you carry this out, we currently have a budget of $300,000 for gross expenditures. That's the difference. I've even been contacted by Senator Collins. She is talking with Mayorkas tomorrow, seeking a bill that will expedite the ability for our asylum seekers to go to work earlier in a quicker fashion. Moving to our resident unhoused population, these numbers are not improving. As of Monday, our mental health unit, so when you hear me say MHU, that's our mental health unit within the police department. It should be comprised of two police officers and two clinical social workers. They've had 190 unique contacts since January. We have 141 known people that have been living outside in their cars. It's an increase of six in the last two weeks. Five of those 141 people are juveniles. That does not count into the number of students that are couch surfing and/or have other housing deficiencies that are being tracked separately in the school department. We have notification, so back in 2017, when the police department started to first conceptualize with then Officer Eric Small, started to conceptualize what now has been created as a mental health unit. He said, "Steve, I want to move from working with the people on the street that are already unhoused. I want to work to being proactive and address the people before they become unhoused." We made great strides in that until COVID hit. COVID changed everything. It changed the number of people that we're receiving. It changed the cost of housing, changed the number of evictions. It has changed how we have to interact with people now. It devastated the healthcare system, so we had loss of mental health bed capacity, substance use bed capacity, all of which is one of the largest impediments that we deal with. We have a limited opportunity of time when a person that is out in the woods makes a decision that they're going to take services. If we don't have a bed available for them within the hour and get them there, their mind tends to change within a couple of hours after that. We miss that opportunity and we're done. We'll work with that person for months more before they may take services yet again. So there's a rising number of people becoming unhoused due to economics. Incomes no longer are able to support the current cost of living and are displaced to untreated disabilities. We're seeing people that are unhoused now because of the disabilities. We had not seen that before in the past. We did have a recent victory. One person went to recovery, and we have three more that are now pending. They've asked to go, we're waiting to find the capacity in order to take them there. So General Assistance utilization for our residents for the month of October was $25,427, or 26% of our total expenditures. $18,670 on housing, $1,369 on food, as being the two largest areas. If they were the only category that we're serving, we would stay on track and be under our $300,000 budget for the year. So the Sanford Mental Health Unit gave us a presentation, one meeting ago, at our homeless task force meeting. I've brought in some excerpts in here from that meeting. It's a much longer presentation, I'm only going to give you a couple of snippets here tonight. It led us to the fact that we are now working towards establishing a York County-wide forum. We're currently looking at December 11th at 7:00 PM at the Sanford Performing Arts Center, for which we will invite all York County legislators to that meeting, as well as York County elected officials. We have the communities of Old Orchard Beach, Kennebunk, Sanford, Kittery, Elliott, and Bitterford committed as a minimum to present their compiled information as far as this presentation is concerned, just to raise awareness to our state delegation. Hopefully, the other elected officials will all come on with the same pieces of information so that we can have a more concerted effort as to where future resources are assigned and how they're best used, and where perhaps they have been assigned in the past that has not been best used. So snippets that I'll give you, so in 2021, which was a high year for us, we were dealing with 62 individuals. We had 10 people known to be actively homeless. 2022, we dealt with 107 individuals, and 41 were known to be homeless. 2023, this was on October 17th, 175 individual contacts and 124 people were known to be homeless. It's getting to be the point that no longer are we big enough to muster the resources, but small enough to pay individual attention. We're capping numbers now with the individual attention and drilling down on the needs is becoming unmanageable.
And even that number changed from 175 to over 190 just since October. So it's increasing rapidly.
Yeah, so since October 17th, we went from 124 documented outside to 141. That was a year's worth of volume for us in a month's time. Looking at the demographics, we have 61 females from those smaller numbers. 61 females, 109 males, and five juveniles. I have the age ranges by distribution on here. Zero to 10 years, there are three subjects, 11 to 27, 21 to 30, 37, 31 to 40, 40, 41 to 50, 45, 51 to 60, 25. Yes, 61 to 70, 15 people are living outside in the woods. Right? And 71 to 83. So it's sobering numbers for us to deal with on a daily basis with this, and my hat goes off to the mental health unit and the direct care providers that are working with this population. Looking at the various categories, we currently have, out of that pool of people, 17 people that can reasonably be housed right now. They don't have mental health issues, they don't have substance use disorder issues. They've been economically displaced or otherwise. We can't find availability of housing. We have housing navigators searching on their behalf in a multitude of locations. There tends to be a stigmatism with landlords. There's a landlord association that the Sanford Housing Authority is in charge of and is helping with that. There is no housing availability for these 17 people that could go there tomorrow if we could find them housing. We have 31 individuals that need a bit of case management, but with that small amount of case management could reasonably be housed. There is no housing there. And then there are 72 individuals that fall into that 24/7 case management, which is why we're working on the Housing First model to get 30 units built with future funding from main state housing. The MHU has responded to 1,277 calls for service since January. Spent 1,233 hours on calls. I won't go into all of these statistics, but the ramp up in these numbers from last year to this year, or from the year prior, is just incredibly outstanding. So 2.8% of those were on welfare checks. 7% of those calls were follow-up calls. 16.5% of the call volume is for homeless calls, and 42% of the call volume comes from mental health and substance use support services.
Steve, I also think it's great that our PD department planned ahead and developed the mental health unit. So we have stuff into place to help, but yet it's still, we need more. And at least we have this, which most communities don't. So I think we're very lucky that our police department had the fourth thought to do this.
So again, as I, yes, thank you. So there's much more information in there. I thought one of the most impactful things is when they get into the human stories. They hit some specific interviews that we were allowed to put into the presentation that will be part of this future presentation. It talks about, for example, one professional chef who was a single dad, raised two daughters in our community, worked his whole life, blew his knee out, was giving painkillers, and now he's living in the woods. So there was a multitude of stories like that that put a different spin on who's out there, who's homeless, and the why. There's some very impactful stories. So again, we're looking at doing a York County-wide forum on this, having our state legislators there and other elected officials. Carter Fenn from the York County Community Action has been working on organizing. So again, we have Sanford, Bitterford- So again, we have Sanford, Bitterford, York, Elliott, Kennebunk and Old Orchard Beach. We need to invite the, invite the York County, excuse me, the York County Commissioners because York County is putting significant investment in our funds in the expansion of Layman's Way, which will be a huge win for our county to get greater capacity there. We're looking at the compilation of homeless statistics from these six communities. Those directly translate out into all of York County. And I think you will be astounded to find that Kittery has similar numbers to Sanford as, as does Bitterford, as does Saco. It is not unique to Sanford or just our larger service centers. We're looking at the leading reasons for becoming homeless, the who and the why, the burden upon local services and service providers, impediments to housing as we currently are tracking. We'll bring in some information from the Alice study that I referenced to you earlier. We're looking at the coordination of services. Coordinated entry has become a very large conversation. We're actually looking at using some county money that's available out there for software and, and to assist us. There are a multitude of these homeless individuals that make minimal amounts of contacts in various communities as they move around. And it's very difficult to track them and to provide them timely assistance when every point of contact is different. So we're, we're addressing that. We'll give summary state of recommendations and then we'll provide everybody in attendance with a data walk and information that they can take back to their respective positions. So again, we were looking at December thirteenth to fourteenth, doesn't work out. SPAC is booked constantly, so now we're looking at December thirteenth. And we've checked with the, I love it.
December eleventh.
Yeah, we've checked with the legislative calendar and committee meetings and we feel that we can have that appropriate attendance by seven o'clock that evening. So I'll let you know when that's firmed up and.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll work on that, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Steve. Do you have any, Anne?
Steve, are there any updates on the York County shelter programs, warming shelter and a stand update on that?
I do not have an update on that. I sent communications out on Monday and I haven't heard back.
And she wasn't at our meeting, so we couldn't ask her.
We were, we were told at the meeting though that they have, they should have received additional funds that will take us from the twenty units to the forty-two. But I can't substantiate that yet.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. And Senator Matt Harrington, Representative Lucas Lanigan and Representative Anne Fredericks, consider yourself invited. And they're all sitting here in our office, in our, our chambers here. So, and thank you for coming tonight. Let's move on to communications and presentations. An update on the task force participation by officers of the Sanford Police Department. And Craig, are you going to present with this? Okay. And for those of you who don't know, Craig Anderson is our police chief, although he humbly just says he works for the P D. But I will introduce him as our police chief.
Well, I work for the police department, that's true.
That's true.
I just happen to be holding that spot at the moment. So what we wanted to bring to you is that we participate in many partnerships and collaborations in our, in our area in York County. And some of them you hear about quite often. The mental health unit, you hear about them regularly as you do with the homeless task force and a number of other endeavors that we do. What you don't hear about so much are a couple of task forces that I want to bring you up to speed with. And what we hope to, to leave you with is a little more knowledge so that you can make better decision on, on how we, how we, how we lend out our resources. And if it's, if you feel that it is cost effective. So when we enter collaborations and partnerships, it's so that we are more efficient and we can afford to put services out there that the city actually doesn't have to pay for, but it is through sharing. We help another community, that other community helps us. It, it saves taxpayer money. We don't have to purchase equipment that we would necessarily have to purchase because some other agency will bring that for us, but we'll bring equipment or resources to them that they didn't have. We feel that collaboration and partnerships, especially in law enforcement, especially, we can highlight that over a number of events in the last year. The Lewiston event was an extreme collaboration of resources statewide. Our own event on November fifteenth, anniversary is coming up next week, was a huge collaboration of many resources that brought folks to Sanford that we benefit, that you, our community benefited from and that we will reciprocate if their communities are in a similar position. So to, so for you to make, be in a stronger position to make or assess our resource contribution, we thought we should let you know about some of these other task force. So the first one, and I don't know if it's on the screen, Steve, if you can bring that up, is the, is task force, well, I just called it task force one, but it's a safe streets program. It's from the Department of Justice. The Federal Bureau of Investigation is the, the parent agency and it's the Southern Main Gang Task Force. It's a broad, the broad initiative is to focus on drug trafficking, firearms violations, racketeering, as well as crossover investigations to assist local law enforcement and violent, high-profile interstate criminality. There are about a hundred and sixty of these task forces throughout the United States. What I think sometimes we lose is that the, there's a number of illegal activities in Maine, Maine, which don't really originate from Maine. They originate out of state and we are just part of the network of criminality. Crimes such as drug trafficking. Most of the drugs that come to Maine are coming from someplace else. Everybody's heard the, well, Massachusetts and New York for sure, as well as other places. Burglary rings, catalytic converter thefts, those are nationwide oftentimes or, or region-wide criminal entities working to take advantage of rural populations in rural areas that, that don't have the law enforcement visibility of, of some of the larger, some of the larger, larger city areas. So when an out-of-state network which transports illegal drugs into Maine then disseminates these drugs throughout our in-state networks, we are all kind of connected. Sanford's connected to Lewiston, connected to Portland, Bitterford's connected to Sanford. It's, it's similar groups or the same groups that's distributing them statewide. So it only makes sense that we collaborate, law enforcement collaborates in, with a task force that can look at this in a, with a broader view. Instead of just the Sanford straw or the Bitterford straw, we're looking at the Maine straw, looking at that, not in a silo, if you understand what I'm kind of saying here. It's a broader view, the three thousand foot view. So some of the things that this group has done in the last year or so, and we, we have one officer that's assigned to this, it's Detective Eric Ray. As, as Steve said, Eric was actually in Lewiston on the day of that event and they had, they had worked a case up there at that time. And so fortunately for that, those officers were there to respond right away. But they conducted fifty-two search warrants, forty-nine arrests, ten federal indictments, twelve judicial complaints. They, they disrupted five criminal organizations. Two criminal organizations were dismantled, two child, children, victims were located, one child victim was identified. Out of that so far, there's thirty-one convictions, twenty-eight sentencing, nine seized firearms, fifty-seven drug seizures, which I just highlighted some of the, some of the bigger numbers, nineteen kilos of cocaine base. That's two point two pounds a kilo or it's forty-one point something pounds. Two point eight kilos of fentanyl, which is about, well, the, the D E A says like a two milligram dose of fentanyl couldn't be lethal. That's like a million four hundred thousand doses, lethal doses. And then four point nine kilos of methamphetamine as well. What's important to note is that Maine has a relatively small population compared to the other task force in, under the Boston office. So Boston office covers Maine, New Hampshire, Rhode Island and Massachusetts. This particular task force were the highest judicial, they had the highest judicial accomplishments of any task force under the Boston authority. And I thought that was pretty special. Certainly, it's, what it displayed to me was they were efficient, they're busy, they're well-managed, they're professional and they're, they're working for us. Some of the things that we benefit from that more directly is that when Detective Ray is, is working in the, in the task force, actually even when he's not physically there, he's provided a vehicle by the task force that doesn't cost the city anything. He's provided access to other equipment. He is cross-trained that we don't have to pay for. He can utilize that cross-training in his detective abilities and duties and responsibilities here. He can help train other officers and pass that knowledge on. And he does. He brings that task force to Sanford when it's appropriate for assistance so that we're not relying just on our own local resources against the collaboration. And any overtime costs that he has while working with this task force is picked up and reimbursed by the FBI. So when we look at that as far as bang for our buck, I think it's a pretty, it's a pretty, pretty good deal for the community. Did you have any thoughts or questions about this particular task force?
Anne?
And I apologize if you said this, Craig, but is he part of our C I D? Okay, thank you.
Yes, he's, he's one of the detectives. He's also a crisis negotiator. So he, he holds, he has a lot of roles. And we, we look at our second task force, which is a little more local, and that is the Maine Drug Enforcement Agency. There are eight Maine Drug Enforcement Agency task force scattered throughout the state. We're in the, in the York County task force. Their primary goal is to disrupt drug markets by undermining the abilities of suppliers to meet demand. And the task force focuses on upper and mid-level drug dealers operating in the state, but below the interests of the federal law enforcement. So there's a little bit of crossover, right? The, the first task force with Southern Gang Task Force, they're looking at drug seizures as well, but they're looking at out-of-state coming into state in higher levels. And M D E A is looking at in-state suppliers that are upper level, but not at the interest of the, of the federal government. So we're not being redundant. Each of the main task forces is a collaboration, collaboration of state, local and county law enforcement officers. So there's like one or two real, truly state employees for Maine Drug Enforcement Agency. It's the director and I, I think it's their executive assistant. Everybody else is, is provided by either the state, a county or a municipality. And what the, what M D A does is they reimburse municipalities or the county for their, for the officers that they send to that task force in collaboration. And they, they reimburse full salary and benefits. So the, the two offices that we have assigned there, and I'm not going to tell you their names because they actually do real undercover work and, and make undercover drug buys, that costs us literally zero. We're refunded one hundred percent for their positions. I was fortunate enough to be able to serve with that agency in two thousand, from two thousand and six to two thousand and seven for a year. And in, in that timeframe, we were able to utilize the funds that the, that the state gave us back for those positions to reinvest back into the police department because it was a drain for them to have me there. And to backfill my position here, obviously costs money through overtime or through not having staffing. So that's something to consider for the future. The, the two undercover offices that we have, again, are provided vehicles, training opportunities and resources at no cost to our city. We're allowed access to technology and equipment. And an example I'll give you is a, a number of, several councils ago, we had a talk, a discussion about a Truenarc device. And a Truenarc device costs about twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars. And it's a device that you can take a sample of a substance, insert it in, within a short period of time, a few minutes, it will tell you what that substance is and that record is a preponderance. So it's not like proof beyond a reasonable doubt type of evidence, but it's enough so that you could write somebody, you know, arrest somebody or write them at summons for a particular crime, possession for a particular type of drug. We talked about spending some grant funding to purchase our own. And our response was, well, we have access to Maine Drug Enforcement's Truenarc or the State Police Truenarc because we're involved in these collaborations. So I, I think that's a great example of how we share resources. We provide them with some people, they provide us with some, with some, with some equipment. But, but it actually goes a lot deeper than that and we'll be able to see that too here in a minute. So I think, is there a little bit more in that slide, Steve?
Yes, Ben, if you can bring the slide back up, please.
So we talked about the broad initiative of the task force and the summary of activities that the task force has done. And they've seized five point eight pounds of fentanyl, only thirteen ounces of cocaine, one point eight pounds of meth. They've served ten search warrants, twenty-eight arrests and seized nineteen firearms. And you'll note that the, the data also identifies that there's been twenty-seven investigations in Sanford, four in Bitterford, three in Kennebunk, five in Saco, right through the list. What I want to kind of highlight to you is that the twenty-seven investigations in Sanford isn't necessarily reflective of a greater degree of a drug problem over those other communities. What it, what it represents more is that we supply two officers out of a five-person team. And so those officers are focused on what's going on here in Sanford, as well as much of the intel that, that the drug agents get and utilize come from the front-facing workforce. They come from the patrol officers who are making traffic stops, who are making arrests, who are developing contacts. That information is sent to Maine Drug Enforcement Agency. And then in this, in this particular case, we just send them to our people because it's our people and they can act upon that intelligence and, and work cases out of that. So that goes back to seeing a direct positive benefit for the city that we, we can, we can focus on our problem to that degree over other, over other communities. And, and believe me, the other, there's other communities, Bitterford, Saco, they have a, they have problems too, for sure. They have a, maybe a different approach. I think Bitterford has their own drug unit. They have their, they have a different way, they're not really involved in this task force at this time. They used to be, but I don't think they are now. So that was the highlight is that, is that yes, we send them to officers, we're paid for them, but look what you're getting compared to the rest of the county. And it's, you know, it's, of course, it's proportional too. Like Parsons Field doesn't have a lot of population and Buxton isn't highly populated and, and, you know, so when you look at those proportions, yes, we have a greater proportion of use, but much of that is due to the offices that we have assigned there work in those cases. And I can assure you, they're not just exclusively looking at Sanford cases. They're working for the collaboration of the county and, and covering all the communities. But just by the nature of our association, it's increased. Any thoughts or comments about that?
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you for the update. I, I appreciate seeing some numbers and, you know, that it looks like it's being effective at taking some of the, the harder drugs off the streets. I do have a question around recent reports of a large number of grow operations in Maine that are linked to foreign entities. Doesn't look like anything's really happening there, but maybe you can speak to that and, I don't know if there's anything you can share with that.
I, I think I have probably the same knowledge as you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not privy to anything greater than that. I just would think that it's on somebody's radar someplace. And the reason why we're not hearing about it is because it's being looked at. But that's just my anecdotal feeling.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, and I do want to point out that, I don't know if Lacey is the only one who does a presentation on Narcam and how to use that. I know she went to Kiwanis the other day and they were very impressed with her. And she's been at multiple other organizations and she does a wonderful presentation. So knowing how prevalent drugs are in our community, it would be wise to have Narcam on hand. Everyone should have it on hand. And if your organization would like a presentation. And if your organization would like a presentation, she likes to do the presentations. She does a very good job. So you can contact the PD, and they can arrange that for your organization.
So just to close this out and bring you full circle, a few months ago, maybe this past summer, we came to you and asked you to approve and accept $8100 in a forfeiture. And so that was actually received, and that was a drug case from 2020. So it takes a while to get through the system. And what I wanted to tell you was that one of the officers involved had been a task force officer, right? Rotated out, but his knowledge, skills, and ability that he learned in the task force with, with Maine Drug Enforcement, Maine Drug Enforcement Agency certainly helped put that case together. And the benefit was three years later, $8100, which, look, it's not, it's not a massive amount of money. But it may not have gone down that way had we had not had that involvement in those task force.
Thank you.
Thanks, I got it.
All right. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it. Okay, the next is a quarterly report and presentation from the Director of Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, Keith McBride.
Good evening. I'm going to try to pull this up here. It's not working.
Well, and while you're doing that, in case people wonder where your office is, it's downstairs. It's expanding into the Chamber of Commerce where that used to be. So soon you'll see their sign outside. They're, they've been working hard on redoing that office space, but right now you can go down the alley, and right there, there's a sign that says Economic Development Growth Council, and you can go in there. But they're very active for businesses that come to our community. Usually we like to direct them there first because it helps them work through the process so they don't forget anything, and then they don't get very frustrated because now they've got to wait three months for some permit. Usually they will help them there line up everything that they need. And we actually do have a brochure in that office that help, is for new businesses and stuff, and I'll actually walk them through stuff. Okay, did I fill up enough time?
You did wonderfully.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. My name is Keith McBride and the Director of your Growth Council. Provide this quarterly update and typically like to start it off with just a reminder of what's, the topics are of our work plan, which we do annually. My goal is to come back to you in February with kind of a 2023 year in review. Each one of these bullet points that are on this list, we've made interesting progress at varying degrees. We're very proud of what we've accomplished so far, and we've still got a month or so left of the, of the year. So I think in February, when we're able to kind of talk about the progress we made on each one of these bullet points and what a 2024 work plan is going to look like, I'm really actually looking forward to that, that presentation. But for now, I just think I'd, I'd like to highlight a couple of things from these bullet points in the last quarter, or things that are upcoming as well. With regard to downtown, I'm going to speak to this a little, in a little bit more detail in a moment, but we've partnered with the Friends of Downtown. We've been working very closely with them on a number of initiatives. We're combining with our efforts to connect with downtown businesses and small businesses in town to talk to them about the competitive advantages and why they're doing business in Sanford and why Sanford's working for them, and at the same time, try to understand some of the challenges that might exist for small businesses as well. So we're hosting, co-hosting a meeting, I'll say, with the Friends of Downtown on November 16th. It will also give them an opportunity to conduct some of the story gathering that they're undertaking right now as part of the Heart and Soul Program. But as I said, that's a teaser. I've got more information on that coming in a couple of minutes. But that's a significant part, I think, of our downtown strategy, getting in touch with those businesses that exist and just small businesses in, in general. With regard to industrial development, I, we have been taking a look at the opportunity to do some pre-permitted development in, for some of the lots that remain in the industrial park. There aren't that many undeveloped lots on Cyro Road and on, in the industrial park area. There's been a lot of development there over the year, and I know that the IDC has been interested in trying to acquire more land to do future industrial development. For some of those existing lots, we're existing now in a situation where industrial vacancies are at historic lows. There's no existing buildings available for businesses to move into. And from Portland to Kittery and even further south, there is no land really that's zoned for industrial, for businesses to build on. And of course, it's not a great time because of interest rates and construction costs. But it seems that it's an opportunity to stick out in the market by having land that has taken away some of those cost and time burdens. So by doing things like, for example, getting pre-permitted stormwater through Maine DEP, that's already taken care of for the maximum amount of impervious at a site. Developer can come in and say, I don't have to worry about that. I can just come in and do my local approvals for my site plan and be off to the races. So we're exploring that with Sebaggo Technics, looking at some of the lots, looking at what that might cost and what that might be for a benefit to those lots, whether it would really make them more marketable, and whether or not the cost put into that could be recuperated through the sale price in those lots. It's a very innovative idea. I'm really excited to be trying something like that because, well, we like to, we like to be innovative here. So if we can do something like that, I think even in a challenging development market that we're in now because of interest rates and other factors, it might kind of set us apart. And with regard to marketing and business attraction, so we, we're leveraging the power, I think, of our local commercial realtors. The commercial real estate community in Maine is a very powerful community. They have much, much better budgets than we do for marketing, and they're much better at it. And we need to make sure that Sanford and Springvale are on their radar. And I think that that's, so far, Mary Hastings, our small business advocate, and I have made outreach efforts to a lot of the commercial real estate professionals in Maine. And every single time that we've done that, it has netted results. We are getting more phone calls with referrals for businesses that are looking to expand or looking to relocate or looking to start. And we're encouraging these people to get those people who are looking to do that to think more about Sanford and its working. So we're going to continue that effort. We are going to be starting a new targeted newsletter and info sheet about Sanford that is going to be directed to commercial real estate professionals. And the idea is just to keep the opportunities that exist here in Sanford front and center, front of mind, so that we get more of those referrals and keeps the phone ringing. And that, to me, I think is a big targeted aspect of our, of our marketing approach. We want the phone to ring. We want those people to be thinking about Sanford and reaching out to Mary and I to, to take advantage of the opportunities that are here. So I always like to take an opportunity to talk quickly about some of the larger macroeconomic trends that are going on and how it's affecting us locally, focusing specifically this time on the Maine consensus economic forecasting report. Twice a year, they, this group of experts in economic forecasting presents a report. Their latest one came out on November 1st, and they had some very interesting outlooks. So this is looking forward to the future and what we can expect and what the challenges are going to be, but it ties in very closely with some of the issues we've already talked about tonight. They noted that Maine is 10th in the country in net domestic in-migration, meaning people moving into Maine from other states. 10th out of 50th, that's very high. Every single county in the state has seen a growth in population because of this domestic in-migration. That's a positive thing. It is also, however, providing a little bit of strain on our housing market. These are people who are moving here because they can afford to move. Lot of people, you know, the, the stat that gets run out a lot is most people can't afford to buy the house they're living in today. The people who can and who have the financial freedom to be looking to relocate to Maine, they're doing so because they can afford to do it, which means they can pay more for housing, and it's keeping the cost of housing relatively high. However, they're also bringing wealth and new jobs and things like that to Maine. So there's pros and cons with that, but it's an interesting thing that is changing our, our demographics in a positive way as well, which we'll come back to in a second. This is all very circular. Unemployment has stabilized at historic lows since April. In Maine, it's been at 4% or less for 18 months, which is almost unheard of. Sanford typically trends only slightly higher than the state of Maine's unemployment rate, except that Sanford spikes in the winter seasons because we have, of a 20% or more of our population is employed in retail, entertainment, recreation, accommodations, and food services. And these industries are heavily, heavily supported by our tourism season, which of course isn't as strong in the winter months here in, in York County. So we have very low employment, and we have this report noted, an age that, an aging population that's very high, close to retirement age. And their concern was that that's not a good combination of factors to support future job growth. This really is the challenge for economic growth for the entire state. It is having a local impact here in Sanford as well. But so far, then, a presentation from Amanda Rektor, a state economist, seemed fairly positive on that impact of that in-migration, that it could be something that's leveling out that demographic and could provide a solution to that demographic problem going forward. These are not things that we here at the Growth Council nor at the City Council have the ability to pass something and change, unfortunately. These are larger macroeconomic issues, but there are problems to deal with and to try to solve as we try to accomplish our goals. So a couple of things just to touch on, on local activity. First, and this comes back to what we were talking about before there, about our partnership with the Friends of Downtown. So Sanford has been tapped into as a spoke, I guess, in a, in a economic recovery hub grant program that's being administered by SNPDC, Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. We've been asked to promote as strongly as we can this grant opportunity to Sanford businesses and area businesses. In a nutshell, there are sort of two wings to this grant program. The money is actually left over from some COVID pandemic relief funding that came from the federal government that was allocated to the Department of Economic and Community Development in Augusta and has filtered down to some of the regional planning agencies like GP Cog and Kennebec Valley Cog and AVCOG and all the other regional planning groups and SNPDC here in York County. So one portion of it is for businesses that have started during the pandemic. So between January 1st, 2020, and I believe it's like May 13th, whenever the pandemic was declared ended, 2023. If you started a business in that time period and you have had COVID impacts, which I cannot believe anybody who started a business in that time period didn't have COVID impacts, then you're eligible for direct financial assistance, and those are grants in the amount of $10,000 to $20,000. And you have to justify that by some COVID impact, and you also have to show that those impacts weren't already remediated by other government programs. So if you received a forgiven PPP loan or other government programs, then your amount of debt you're eligible for may be reduced. But that's one portion of it, this direct financial assistance. And it only applies to small businesses employing 25 or less. The second piece of it is not tied necessarily to you have to having open during a certain time period. It's eligible for all small businesses, and it's for technical assistance. So the SNPDC folks who are scaling these will, will take a look at it and determine what types of financial, excuse me, technical assistance would apply to you. They've given as examples web design services, bookkeeping services, marketing and social media assistance. So if you are a business who's operating, needs those professional services, you're a small business here in Sanford, there's an opportunity to apply to receive funding to pay for that, which is a great opportunity for those businesses who might need a boost for some of those services. And of course, we're using this as an opportunity also to promote some of the existing free services that are out there through organizations like Small Business Development Centers, SCORE, New Ventures Maine, and others. So there will be a meeting on November 16th, which is just a week from tomorrow. It's coming right up on top of us here, and it will be at the Memorial Gym. And like I mentioned before, it's co-hosted by the Growth Council and the Friends of Downtown. We will be talking in more detail about that grant. We will actually have laptops set up. So if you are there and you're a business and you want to apply, Mary and I will be there to walk you through the application. You can do it right there on the spot. We will also have a presentation from some of the other resource providers, including York County Community College and New Ventures Maine, SNPDC, and some of the other folks that are involved in that. And there will be an opportunity also to talk about what's working in Sanford and what's working for small businesses, and what are the challenges, and how do we approach them. And it also gives a great opportunity for our friends at the Friends of Downtown to do that additional story gathering, talking to people about why they're in Sanford, what keeps them here, what's special about Sanford, what do we need more of, which is a critical part of their heart and soul process. So I encourage all businesses to get more information, to take part. You can contact me or Mary at the Growth Council offices for more information on that, but it's next week, so it's coming right up. So please at least pencil it in on your calendars. And lastly, just a quick update. I, I know that this evening, probably as we're speaking right now, the folks from Green Mars Real Estate are holding a community forum on phase two of their development at Nassau. For a quick refresh, their phase one plan was to redevelop three buildings at the former Nassau into 83 units of housing. One of those buildings was removed but will be rebuilt, so they're still on target for that 83 units in that first phase. One of those buildings, they're doing some of the internal fit-out. They're hoping to have rent units available January to February, which is coming right up, and that's very exciting. And the other building, a little bit further behind that, but also coming along. And phase two will involve new construction. They're putting up a new building with 18 more units and will be, I think, coming, I think they'll be coming up for more site planner. They went to the, to the Site Planner View Committee already, but I believe they'll be coming forward for more planning board approval on that. Yes, Jamie's nodding at me, and that's usually a good sign. So that is moving along, it's moving along very well. They were held up a little bit by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, but they did get their approvals on their stormwater, and they are absolutely cranking full steam ahead. And they're hoping to utilize funding through Maine Housing on those additional 18 units. So we've written a letter of support on their application for that program and wish them the best of luck. So thank you all for your time. I know it's been, we've had a lot presented to you at this meeting already, so I'll, I'll keep it short at that, but I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? Anne?
Keith, just to put it on your radar, I know for myself and maybe others, it'd be great to get a tour of the first completed building at Green Mars once they're done. We're not, we often, you know, do tiffs and other things, but don't see the final product. It'd be great to get a chance to tour it before it's, if that's possible.
I think that's a great idea. I'll definitely reach out to Chris and Nate and let them know that I'd like to have a tour of there too, to be honest. So yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Would you tell them that I would love to see his dad, Mark, come down at the same time, because I haven't seen him forever?
I will, I will pass that along.
Thank you.
He bought a sailboat, he's busy.
It's wintertime, it's wintertime. I would love to see him, he's such a nice guy.
All set?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving right along to public participation. And let me explain what this is all about because sometimes people get a little confused. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about the polls, that is on the agenda. And so in just a few minutes, we will be addressing that. So under public participation, because we're only hearing one side, whoever comes to talk, we do not usually make any comments unless we have some clarifying questions. You are given three minutes to present, and then we shut you off right at the three-minute. I come up and I get the hook out and I pull you away. So if you're already on the list and you've realized it is on the agenda, you just let me know when I call your name. Steve, do we have the list from down? And as Steve is getting the list, I think we have Diane Conley. You've got your hand up to speak, you wanted to speak. Is this about anything that's already on the agenda, or is this something separate?
Something separate.
Thank you, go ahead.
Good evenings, Diane Conley from Springvale. I would like to know if the Public Safety or the Council will have a general discussion about the safety of the residents, particularly in Springvale, in regards to hunting and the three-quarter mile, or three-quarters of a mile from Main Street, no discharging of a firearm. We've had three incidences here in Springvale, mine in particular, with hunters that are just turning and shooting, or shooting after it gets dark, or shooting within houses and not abiding by this law. And when we ask for help, we're given the one, two... And when we ask for help, we're given the one, two, from Sanford Police, sorry, you'll have to call the State Police to the warden. We talked to the warden in the State Police, oh, sorry, we don't, we're too tired, we can't know where it came from, and go talk to codes enforcement. That is not correct. We have that rule, we have that ordinance, and we'd like to see it enforced. And I would like to know if Sanford would have that conversation about banning all firearms within the city limits in regards to hunting, because it is putting people in danger, and I'm sick of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Diane. And the second person is Christopher Hayward, you're online, are you ready to speak today?
Yes, um, it was about the poll, it was about the poll.
Okay, we are going to be taking that up in a few minutes, so when we get to that, you just raise your hand again or let us know and we will call on you at that time. So we will be giving you information first, and we might even answer your question, but then we can talk back and forth. Under public participation, I can't comment on it, but under what it's under next, I can. So we'll talk to you then.
All right.
All right, thank you. Anyone else online? All right, let's go to our list. Roland, is yours about the polls or is it about something else?
Something else.
Come on up. And if you would please introduce yourself and where you live, and then talk about your topic.
I'll speak over here, I have a good mic.
You have to, because we're televised.
I have a good mic.
First thing I want to say, I want to thank Sue Cody for the fantastic job that your whole group did yesterday in the voting system. Thank you so much. My, my thing will be very quick, I can stutter longer than three minutes if you know who I am. My name's Roland Cody, I'm also on the Water District Trustee. I won the election because no one ran against me. If they had, I probably would have lost, so thank you for not running against me. I'm here today to talk very quickly about the rounding about down in southern Sanford. I live in a handicapped place, or retarded people there, or people over 55, and a number of them have talked to me about it, and I feel very strongly about this. I went to see the town manager the other day, but he was too busy to talk to me, so the secretary called me, so I've been working hard at this. If you go down there and you see the traffic, it's nothing but horrendous. It's not only dangerous, it's a total decay of people coming into Sanford and seeing that place. There's trees in the middle of that area, 10 feet tall. I've checked it out, there's grass, it's high, it's filthy down there, and no one's ever cleaned it to that point, and people are driving down there all the time. I just wish that they'd get somebody, I don't care if it's a group, a rotary, any group going down there and cutting those trees down and make it very, very available to see. If you're driving, for instance, from Wells to Sanford and you hit that area, you can't see any cars coming because there's so many trees there, okay? It's a very serious area, it's many ways, I think it's very, very filthy for people to come into Sanford and see that right off the bat. It's dangerous, it's filthy, and it should be taken care of before wintertime. Thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate your listening, and right now, that's all I've got to say. I have other things later, but that's enough.
All right, thank you Roland.
Thank you very much.
And to let you know-
Are they planning on doing anything about it?
We are planning, that's, we spoke about it during our last meeting, and there is a plan to do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. All right, the next person is, Jim, are you on something else?
On the-
Okay, okay, good. All right, David, the same thing, are you?
Polls.
Polls. Michael, I don't know, you're all set too? Okay, well, that was an easy one. All right, we can move ahead. And we're going to get to the real one soon, it'll just take us a couple. This is the public hearings, and the city will take public comments on the following. So let me explain what happens under public hearings. What I do is, there's five different things, and for each one, I open a hearing and I close a hearing. So every time, it's going to be very boring because I do it every single time, so I'm required to do that, so you'll hear me do that. And the, this part of it is to hear from you, because under new business, we take up most of these again, and that's where the council will be talking about the stuff. So this is where, when we get to the one on the polls, this is where you guys will speak. Okay, so let's do the first one. I'm going to open a hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Grove Cannabis Company for cannabis manufacturing tier-one license at 72 Emery Street, Unit 106 Sanford, Maine. Are there any comments for? Are there any comments against? I'll close this hearing. I'm going to open the next hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Alexa Extracts LLC for medical cannabis grower cultivation license at 72 Emery Street, Unit 175 Sanford, Maine. Are there any comments for? Are there any comments against? This hearing is closed. I'm going to open a hearing to receive comments on the following. Per MRSA Title 21A, Section 631 and Section 631A2, the City Council will open a public hearing to take comments on the proposal to consolidate and reduce the current three city wards to one. In addition to consolidating the wards, the proposal will consolidate the existing three polling places to one. The location of the new polling place will be the Veterans Memorial Gym, 678 Main Street, Sanford, Maine. Now this one, we're going to do a little differently, because Sue is going to come up and make some comments about this, so Sue, come on down. And before we get comments for or against, they need to know what they're for or againsting.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. As many of you know, since I became the town clerk in 2011, I have had a dream to narrow down the voting places in Sanford and Springville. When I first started, we had seven different polling locations, because at that time, our form of government, we had a representative town meeting form of government, and each of the seven wards elected members to be their voice on budget items and such. As time progressed and less interest in the representative town meeting came, I read the new charter was adopted in 2012. At that point, when we went to a city council, was going to be the legislative body, I had no need to maintain those seven wards, so I did an initial consolidation and moved two of the existing places and joined them together. So Ward Four and Five were combined, and then Wards Three and Seven were combined, so we had five polling places. That was actually the very first year I did not have to be here for 24 hours after the presidential election counting votes. In 2008, we were here till seven o'clock the following morning before we were able to go home, waiting for the returns from the seven polling places. So I was very excited to not have to do that again. When the state representative districts were redone in 2014, was it? Then I had an opportunity at that point to consolidate a little bit more, took the five polling places, turned it into three. Here I am now, requesting, let's get it to one place. It's harder to find workers to staff three different polling places. I have to have the balance of the Democrats and Republicans at each polling place. Just yesterday, I had last-minute phone calls at five o'clock in the morning, a couple of the workers at different polling places were not able to go, they had, you know, come down with head congestion and were already immune compromised and did not want to go out and be at the voting place, so told me they weren't going to be able to go, and I certainly understand that. It will be very convenient to have all the voting in one place. Every election, people are calling, where do I go vote? Where do I go vote? Just yesterday, there were a handful of people that showed up at Ward Three at the Sanford High School to vote, because they live on Main Street in South Sanford, and they thought, well, that's my voting place, it's right around the corner. No, because they were on the other side of Main Street, that put them at Ward Two, so they had to turn around, drive into town, and go to the Sanford Christian Academy over on Riverside Avenue. It happens that all the elections, people get confused like that, so having the voting one central location, they won't be in the wrong place. They need to change their address, they could do that, and they just get into the correct line, instead of having to drive all over town for that. Savings in staffing for the off-years when we have just the school budget referendum, instead of having to pull, you know, staff three voting places, I can have probably half a dozen people work at the Memorial Gym all day, instead of having to pay 20 people to work at three different places. So there'll be some cost savings there. Of course, presidential elections are going to be very busy, they're busy no matter how many polling places you have, but I will have the opportunity to have more people and more check-in places, and all the voting booths and voting machines will be at one place, and we'll be able to handle the volume.
And Sue, I do know that one of the issues happened at some of the churches is the petitions that were being signed, and the church, a lot of the churches stopped allowing people to vote in their facilities because of that, one being the abortion issue, they didn't want people signing a petition, you know, that was totally against their belief system. So that's one of the things that, you know, we've lost a lot of the churches not willing to do that, and one of the concerns Curtis Lake had was during one of the presidential elections, we felt because the community was so volatile at that time, we needed to have the police present, and that was the last year we approved having them present at that building. And they're pretty community-centered, and they couldn't do it. So I think, I even wonder about the Christian Academy, depending upon what petitions are being signed in the future, if they're going to even allow us to use their facility.
I don't know how much longer we'll be able to use that facility, they're looking to change the buildings-
They are.
...into schools with classrooms and-
Yeah, so I knew that, I knew that's going to shut down, so we're going to run out of places.
I'm going to be, yeah, scrambling to try and find another place, so there's no time like the present, let's-
All right, great, super. Any comments for this from the public? Any, I know I'm going to have, a lot of people want to talk against, so I will, oh, wait a minute, we've got some emails that came in, so Steve's going to share those. So go ahead, Steve.
So I have two, two emails that were submitted in the non-support category, so I'll hold those, but there was one email that was submitted and requested reading of the record this, in support. This was submitted by Representative Anne Marie Mistracchio, House District 142. She states, "I had planned to attend tonight's council meeting, but because of her legislative commitments, she could not be here. My intention was to testify in favor of the plan to consolidate our three voting sites into one, the Memorial Gym. I have long been an advocate for this exact plan. As it became increasingly more difficult to staff three polling places, it was apparent to me that we needed to do something different. I anticipated the return to the city of the Memorial Gym and saw that this opportunity to accomplish the consolidation. I was happy to see the city clerk make this recommendation and have shared my support of the plan with Maine Secretary of State Bellows." "It is centrally located building of sufficient size, handicap accessible, and has adequate parking available. I'm looking forward to the day when all voting in Sanford will take place at the Memorial Gym." And she has to have her testimony read, her input read into the record this evening. Thank you.
And then we have against, and we have a couple of emails for that too?
I do. Are you moving to that?
Yes, we're moving to that now.
Okay. The first is submitted by Melanie Russo. She says, "Hello, I'm writing to you about the November 8th meeting concerning consolidation of the polling places per your notice." She is submitted pursuant to the link. "I realize that finding people to cover the voting days is probably a difficult job. I'm sure it is even, it would even be less expensive to place everything under one roof, but I need to voice this concern. I personally have spent many years encouraging people to get out and vote. It has proven a difficult task as not many people embrace their, quote, 'right to vote.' However, the few people that are seeing the importance are required to wa-" I apologize. "However, the few people that are seeing the importance are required to walk to their voting wards to exercise their right to vote. I know that moving and centralizing to a single ward will create a great hardship on those people, people being those that are walking. That is my concern, thank you for your time." Also, a strong no was by Marlene Parent. She states, "Consolidating the wards one, I, a very strong no to Ward One for our city. Memorial Gym requires a hefty walk to get to the voting area, and it would be difficult for us older people. It is not convenient, has awful parking, and not a good idea. This is how to assure the people, don't go vote, don't go to vote. No, no, no."
Thank you.
Emphasis on the no, no, no.
All right. I'm going to, no, our comments aren't now. Ours are later.
Okay.
In case you're wondering, this will be, come again under new business. All right. Jim Singh is your first on my list, I'm going to call you down if you would introduce yourself and where you live, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim D. Irwin, Springville.
I'd like to point out you're on the Airport Committee, and so if people want to know about, because we need one more person, they could talk to you about that too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Your Hon, your Hon, excuse me, Mayor, I speak against this for a multitude of reasons, but I'd like to say that I respect Sue Cody highly, and it's a pleasure doing business with her, there's several years that I've been here, and I can't think of a better person to put in that job. However, this particular case, we're butting, we're butting heads on this, but I think it's probably the only thing we've butted heads, so I have to agree. Older citizens feel voting in person is their civic duty, and they still do it. And now that I've turned 65, I feel like, you know, I'm one of those older citizens now, so I can speak for some of them, if not my wife's family that are here in town. They still show up at the polls to vote. It's hard for them to get around, and the local polling stations make it much easier for our older citizens. I don't know of any other cities in Maine, maybe Sue could tell us or the city manager, if there are any other cities in Maine that have only one polling site. I don't know of any. I've looked it up and I couldn't find that information. And a question I would have for the city, has Sanford exhausted all other avenues to find poll workers to work the polls to help out with the overload? Have we put notices in our tax bills? Because taxpayers usually come out to vote, and it's a great place to reach them. Have we reached out to city groups? Is there any consideration to increase the pay of the poll workers? I don't know if they've ever had a pay raise. Maybe we, if we pay them a bit more, as people who work at McDonald's find out, that if you pay them a little bit more, they'll show up, and you'll have more people applying for that job. for that job. I've been to the Memorial Gym a lot, and I was just there the other day. Matter of fact, Election Day, because I knew this was coming up. And I must say, I can't be very pleased with the way the school department up-kept that building, maintained it. It's poorly maintained, or it was poorly maintained. I know the city's going to do a better job of cleaning it and fixing it, but if you were to walk out the door today, you would notice that there's at least a two-inch drop in the bricks on the front steps. It's an accident waiting to happen, and it's the whole front of the gym. The brickwork needs to be completely redone. There's a lot of money that's going to cost the city to, to do this, implement this program. And I'm not in favor of it, and I just think it needs to be reconsidered or pushed down the road, especially when a presidential, excuse me, a presidential election coming up. I don't believe that the Memorial Gym could handle the influx of traffic that would be in and out of that building, especially with one small elevator for the handicap to go up and down. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. And Sue, there was two places in Maine that, three?
City of Westbrook, one single voting place. Waterville, one single voting place. Bangor, one single voting place. And I know Waterville and Bangor have a higher population and more registered voters than Sanford. Westbrook might be similar.
Mm-hmm.
What about Bitterford? I'm noticing a notice of consolidation from 2014. Did they go, did they expand outward? They're at the Tiger Gym.
It's possible they might be.
They consolidated down to one in 2014.
Yeah.
So there are a lot of cities who've done that. Okay.
Yeah. And regarding the disability entrance, there is an elevator on the side entrance in the driveway. Also, if you, the, I've got the...
Between the Willard and...
Between the Willard School and the gymnasium, the former playground, would be dedicated for disability parking.
Mm-hmm.
Most doesn't like to work. So this area here, this is the parking lot between the gym and the high scho, and the Willard.
We don't have it. Oh, there we go.
Oops. So right here, these would all be marked dedicated parking for handicap. This side entrance has the handicap accessibility push button to open the doors. There is currently a paved ramp, if you will, from the sidewalk to the parking lot, which over time, with the weather, you know, cold and freezing, warm, freezing, that has separated a little bit. And when Secretary Bellows came to view the place on October 25th, she did make a notation of that, but we could either have our Public Works Department fill that in, or I was looking at just small temporary ramps, about six-foot length, that could be set up there and actually have railing, so somebody who was, you know, walking with a cane and needed some extra stability could do that. So more than one accessible entrance.
And Sue, was there a reason why you didn't consider doing, like, one place at the high school, because that was too south Sanford, and you were looking for a neutral location?
I would prefer not to be in a school building, because presidential election year, I mean, just yesterday, the parking was limited for the small turnout that we had. Come a presidential election, parking would be very bad.
And I do know a lot of communities close their school for Election Day, so...
I've had that conversation with the Superintendent Matt Nelson, and because we have the Sanford Regional Technical Center, we have sending schools in the area, and they're only allowed so many days on the school calendar that they can have not matching days off.
That's correct.
So like holidays and teacher workshop days, et cetera. Election Day isn't usually taken off in Sanford. I mean, during COVID, it was a blessing in 2020 because they were all remote anyway, so we did have exclusive use of the building. But for next year, I don't foresee another pandemic and hope one does not happen to create that capability, but...
All right. Thank you. Hold on one moment. Okay, hold on. Pete, you have an email to read that somebody sent in?
Yeah, I do.
Is this one for or against?
It seems like it's against. This is Council Transmon... Sorry. Council Transmontaine, I'm writing to you a story for the main wire on the Sanford proposal to reduce the number of polling locations from three to one. Do you think that this is wise, given the slim margins of victory in recent Sanford elections, when the removal of two of Sanford's polling locations could convincingly affect the outcome of future elections? So that's another take on it. I just wanted that out there from the email.
Okay. Thank you. Brady has a comment. Brady Lloyd does our buildings, and he has a comment about Memorial Gym. Brady?
Good evening. I just wanted to comment on the, the front stairs and entrance into the gym. It's definitely not in great shape right now, but our mason just finished up the work on the upper back portion of the facility, and now he's moving to the front stairs. So we're hopeful that that work will be complete. I, I'd like to say in the coming weeks, but it's going to be dependent on weather, but definitely prior to when elections will be held at, if they were to be held at the gym. Thank you.
Thank you, Brady. Appreciate that. Okay. We've got a couple more speakers that would like to present. David, would you like to come on down and tell us your full name and where you live?
Hello? My name's David S. Lahou, and I live at 16 Pine Wood Drive in South Sanford. And I was just at the Memorial Gym this afternoon, and what it, because of the picture that they're showing, there's a great, on that handicap side of the parking lot that they're talking about using for access, there's a great big diesel generator there with another great big electrical transfer box. And away from that is a chain-link fence to keep people away from it, which diminishes the size of the parking area and the ability to get up close to that ramp. Also, along the backside of that parking area, as you're driving up to it, because you could only go one way around the gym, is another chain-link fence that goes between the gym and the school, Willard School next to it, with only a minimal opening on one end of it, which is, was difficult for me to manage with a car, and there was another truck, a utility truck, on the inside of it. So the space on the inside of that parking area is hard to negotiate for one vehicle, never mind trying to get a line of elderly vehicle, elderly people driving their vehicles into that area. And on the right side of the building, as you first drive in off of Main Street, the access door at the bottom in the basement, they're talking about using for access to get to the elevator, is barely a 30-inch door. And from what I understand, the elevator inside the gym to go from first, second floor is more reminiscent of a freight elevator and not actually a person elevator. More likely small and not very accommodating or fast to try and get any amount of people from the basement up to the voting area. So with the minimal amount of parking, whether it's on the street, you're talking about walking the distance of the Sanford Pride Elementary School all the way up to the gym, or all the way down to, what is it, the Legion, Portland Glass, and walking all the way back to the gym. Now, they got the lower parking lot, but they've put gym equipment in for the elementary school, which minimizes the amount of parking there as well. You go all back, and there's a minimum amount of parking there as well. Now, I spent three hours at the Nassau on pole yesterday morning, seven hours at the Christian Academy School over on Riverside Ave. And so the one in Nassau, in the three hours I was there, because it's, has easy access, one level from the parking lot all the way into the gym, a woman that was blind on one side was able to push a little hand grocery cart in, managed to get her ballot, sit down and vote without any accessibility issues. Somebody else came in in a wheelchair, somebody else came in in a motorized little scooter so that they, they could get themselves in and vote. I think the idea that accessibility on a single level platform from the parking lot into the voting area, so that they don't have to go up a ramp, stairs, or any sorts, is going to be beneficial to the voting class. Over at the Christian Academy, they have one step off of the, from the step to the sidewalk, and they had a ramp that was no longer than this, barely wide enough for a wheelchair, and nobody that had any handicap needs showed up to vote at that pole. And that's what I saw yesterday in the time I spent. I just don't think that, it might be centrally located, but the facility isn't proper for the elderly people in this area, which are very robust voters for this community. And that's just my take on what I saw yesterday. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Michael? You are all set. Okay. All right. And Diane Conley?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm against this. On any given day that there's a special event at Memorial Gym, there are parking problems. There's congestion. I don't really think people would want to come down there. And I agree with the last speaker at the podium, particularly Springville at the gym there. It's a lot easier to get into that building on one level, especially with that handicap ramp. And I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any other comments? Excuse me, is Chris back on? Oh, okay. All right. Yep. And Lucas? Oh, you may come on up. Introduce yourself and where you live.
Yes. My name is Anne Fredericks. I live at 1603 Main Street. That's part of South Sanford. My voting site is at the high school. I'm also the state representative, a privileged elected official from South Sanford. In the, in the voting process of yesterday, I was speaking to people at the voting site of the high school and asking them about their input relative to the proposal. Personally, conceptionally, I was in agreement with consolidations, if it were to be a cost savings, and to allow for improved oversight of the voting process. I like the idea. However, as I thought through it more and heard from more constituents, there are issues that I want to emphasize. First and foremost, we don't want to lose anyone's vote, regardless of what party. And convenience and access has to be appreciated fully. Convenience, now that is individualized to the, the health status, the mobility, the working hours, availability. There's so many factors that go into convenience. It is very individualized. But we've got to think about the setting as far as, are there going to be wait lines? We've already been told by the town manager that we're talking about 15,000 registered voters in our community. You know, we're seeing four, 8,000 come out to vote, but what if all 15,000 individuals came out to vote on this day? We need to have a traffic plan, a pattern. We need to have flow. We need to have no wait lines. Individuals yesterday told me at the high school that they experienced wait lines at the high school. I was astonished. I hadn't observed this. But even so, that's just at that one site. So it troubles me that if we were to consolidate, it may push some of our own voters in our own community away. And shame on us if that's so. So I leave you with, I'm a no-vote to consolidating at this location. I don't think it's flush, it's, it's topographically a difficult piece of property to maneuver, regardless getting in, getting out to the back parking lot. It's a descent down the parking lot. The lighting needs, there's, there's a cost factor that would have to go into this site to make it ADA compliant, American Disabilities Act compliant. So there are multifactorial issues. I'm going to leave it in, in our good town fathers to think this through and just hear me. And I didn't hear anybody speak to me about a yes vote, and I did ask. So thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucas?
Weird, I haven't been here in a minute. Welcome. Thank you. Well, J.J., so I'm on the opposite side now.
Welcome back. How does it feel being down there?
Madam Mayor, thank you for having me, you know? And congratulations to Counselor Hitchcock, Martell, and Deputy Mayor Hurley on your wins yesterday. It was great seeing you guys all elected. I don't normally disagree with Mayor Mistracchio, but, or Representative Mistracchio, but I'd have to strongly disagree with this on, on access. I really think that this is going to cause more voter suppression than we're already seeing kind of happen these days. And, and why I say that is the, the effects of long lines have been studied, that they actually negatively affect our lower-income community members and our, also our minority groups. Anywhere that there's longer lines formed, they're more just, just in chance to, to actually get out and vote. They're saying that long lines have actually caused about 560,000 voters just to turn away and not even cast their vote. And I think the last thing that we want to do is encourage people not to vote. In a study that I pulled up by a bipartisan organization, I sent a copy to City Manager Buck, academic studies have identified structural causes of long lines, such as resource availability and deployment, precinct size and location, ballot length, poll workers and timing. Now, I don't understand, I, I understand Sue's argument on, on employees, but if you're going to consolidate it to one location, I would, I would think that you would still need the same amount of people running the polling station, because you have to have three times the, the amount of people checking in at a time. It takes about one minute per person to check in. That's the, that's the average, when they come up, they give their name, they tell their address, they're verified, and then they're handed their ballot and then to go vote. The elbow of death, what they call it in polling or in, in elections, is 58. So if there's more than 58 people in line, you'll start losing voters. So you would have to, you would have to staff it equally, if not more, if you're consolidating down to one location. I think it's a little unfair to compare us to maybe Bangor that has the Cross Insurance Center. I mean, that place is ginormous. You could actually have a wing dedicated to five different wards, and it would be the same thing as having, we just don't have that type of building here in Sanford. The other thing that I'm very concerned, and this is more the parent in me, is, and a lot of the people that I represent are parents, is they have middle schoolers, and our middle schoolers now go to that school at fifth, in fifth grade, and at 2:00 in the afternoon, they're, they're walking. And, you know, if people are crying, trying to cram into the, the voting on their, you know, time between lunch, and they see a long line, and they're looking over, and, and the kids are running around, you know, trying to get home, crossing the street, it can be, it can cause some serious, you know, injury, or maybe even death to our youth. And, and I really want to consider that. I do want to say that the other thing that happens with long lines is, it actually, it there's, long lines have also exacted monetary costs, and research conducted by the PCA estimated that the wage equivalent of the time spent waiting to vote in 2012 was over a half a billion dollars that cost people to wait. Now, that's why when I talked about lower income and higher... Now, that's why when I talked about lower income and higher income is someone of a higher income has the ability to make that adjustment in their day. But if I've got an hour off from my job, maybe at Walmart or, or whatever job it is, maybe I'm only working 20 hours a week and I have to give up that time to go vote and I have an hour to do it, if I hit that hour threshold, I have to leave. So we're talking about convenience. So someone driving from South Sanford now to Memorial Gym, that's now 15 minutes with traffic. Never mind if it's school time, it's probably going to be 25 to 30 minutes. Then when they get there, if the lines are extremely long, then they're going to be, they're totally just going to be disenfranchised from even voting. And that's the last thing that we want to do. We've had record turnouts in voters. We've had great elections. I feel in Sanford, we've had actually great elections. I, I haven't seen the turmoil that we're talking about, I've just seen passionate people getting out and voting.
Luke, you're getting at the end of the three minutes.
Oh, I only have three minutes?
Yes.
Sorry, this isn't legislative. Legislative, I could just talk all day until the speaker kicks me out. So I will wrap it up with that, I, not that I think it's a horrible idea, I wish we had a bigger facility, I wish we had something that offered this ability to do it, but I really think it's going to hurt especially our city and our voters and their voice. We want to make sure that we have the right people representing the right things. Can I add one thing, Madam Mayor? Just to the Economic Development Director, that Mars project, if the state of Maine, who has it in their budget, actually used their resources to hire the 173 DEP empty positions, they wouldn't have waited from April 17th until August to get their permits. And it's voices like yours, you know, letters from you guys that will make those differences. We can do all the barking we want, but we're funding those positions, they're just not hiring them. And that is why we don't have Phase Two already up and we almost lost that project. So I just wanted to bring that to light for everybody and for the Economic Development Director. Thank you so much for your time. I'm sorry I went probably over my three minutes.
And do you know that that was Mark Green's kid?
Yes.
Our past city?
Yep.
Yeah.
He called me and actually asked me to reach, that's how I know the numbers, is I reached out and I'm like, why is it? And they're like, we just don't have the staff. And well, you just have to hire it or move staff over. I mean, we all know when the building season is in Maine, it's not January. You know, so let's shift some positions, but there, there is corrections to that, we just have to be vocal as a group and that's the council and representatives and maybe we can move these projects quicker and not worry about losing them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak to, okay, come on down. Please introduce yourself. We probably already know who you are, but.
Matt Harrington, I live in Springvale. I'm not going to rehash a lot of the points that have been made here tonight, having sat at a horseshoe the better part of the day myself. I just do want to reiterate some of those, you know, points that I think it will suppress voters, having been on the ballots numerous times here in Sanford. I've personally stood at each of those polling locations and had lines out the door. Consolidating into one location will no doubt add to the size of those lines and will suppress voices being heard here in Sanford. So I just want to reiterate that and I hope you thoughtfully, you know, think this through. Going from three to one is a very abrasive approach, maybe even from three to two could be a safer approach to do this, but going down to one is very concerning, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that's it. Anybody online? Okay, I'm going to close this hearing. And to let you know, we still take that up under new business for those people.
Yeah, I had an email that I received.
Okay.
Point of order, should we be receiving emails while we are discussing this from the public and then bringing them to the public?
No, usually we've had the emails way beforehand.
Yeah, mine was beforehand.
Beforehand.
Mine was beforehand.
Okay.
Or Steve.
Nope. Why don't we, before I close this hearing, is it for or against?
It's against.
Okay. Go ahead.
So this is from Shawna Lyons, it says to, microphone, sorry, thank you. From Shawna Lyons, to whom it may concern, I do not agree with consolidating the three existing poll locations in Sanford down to one. I believe it will do a great disservice to the people of Sanford-Springvale. Given the population of our city, trying to get everyone to vote in one location will vastly increase the wait time to cast your vote, which I believe will discourage people from going out to vote. Also, there are many with limited or no transportation, and I don't think this has been brought up before, but if they have to pay for a taxi or Uber or walk too far, they won't go vote. If you want to keep our city fair to all, I feel we'll need to keep more than one voting location as we have now. Thank you, Shawna Lyons.
Thank you for bringing that to us. Sue, are you speaking again right now or are you going to be speaking at the next?
I was going to bring a point regarding transportation. Thomas Rainhour from York County Community Action, the director of the transportation, was actually at the subcommittee meeting online back in August when we were discussing this and totally caught me off guard and started talking about, you know, that'd be great, right on Main Street, they actually have a stop for the Sanford Community Adult Education, which is at the Willard School right next door. So there's public transportation available for that. In addition to the Sanford Transit Route, they have a demand response service, which is available for residents that may not be able to utilize the Sanford Transit Route. Residents would be able to call in advance to the York County Community Action, request a ride to and from their polling location. Having one polling location instead of three will certainly make those trips easier to coordinate and schedule. And he did also point out that the current three voting places, only one actually is on the route. And that's the Nassau and in Springvale. The high school and Riverside Avenue is not. Riverside Avenue, Ward Two, parking there is atrocious. People fly up Riverside Avenue, they don't care that both sides of the street align with cars. It is not safe. After the dark, after the sun sets and it's dark, you take your life in your hands there.
People fall off that ramp all the time.
All right.
And also, I had a layout here, a proposed layout that I shared with the Secretary of State of the new proposed place at the Memorial Gym. So the green is outside of the guardrail area, so the public area where people would be waiting. There would be four different lanes for checking in. I have, yesterday's election, I had 30 workers, 10 at each location. So if I had 30 people, 28 people dedicated to the checklist, there would be, probably not have been any long lines for people waiting to check in. Because I'll have that capability with more people in one location, split the list into smaller sections and get them through quicker. And candidates would only have to worry about standing outside one voting place, not driving all over town like me.
How many?
Hold on a second, this isn't for our discussion.
No, no, I'm just going to ask her, because she was showing the layout, how many actual voting booths would be in there?
I have 75 voting booths available, plus I have two accessible voting systems that are provided by the state of Maine with HAVA funds. I have six and eight foot tables like we use here during other meetings. I have the tri-fold privacy shields that can be set on those tables so that voters that have a hard time standing for a long time to read the ballots, especially with yesterday's ballot with eight very wordy questions, can sit down comfortably and read their ballots and vote and then cast their ballots in the ballot box and head out.
Thank you, Sue. Steve?
Yeah, thank you for answering the voting booth, Sue, because that's three times the capacity that would have had to been had yesterday. So when I took the 4,271 votes that were cast, 951 of those were cast absentee. So 22% of our voting population, and I've seen it as high as 25% on presidential years, comes through the early and or absentee ballot voting. So that left us with a net of 3,320. If you figured five minutes per individual in the booth, you'd need 25 booths to accommodate that flow. So 75 would do three times that flow of individuals, so that's just for perspective. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, I'm going to close this hearing. We're going to open the next hearing in consideration of taking certain property for the purpose of abating the blight, remediation, read, okay, I can't say that word and I can look right at it. Environmentally contamination and constructing a public parking facility and for other public purposes pursuant to 30A MRS Sections 3101 and 23MRS Section 3023. The property under consideration for taking, consistent of a portion of the real property interests is a certain parcel of land situated on a map, parcel J 2924 and J 2925, and being a portion of the premises described in the deed of, and I'm not sure if I'm just supposed to state all these initials, or is it an acronym that you say? But I'll say the letters in case people want to know. Capital M, capital E, capital D, capital E, capital A, USA LTD and to what, capital R, capital E, capital G, capital C, capital O, Inc., dated October 12th, 2007, and recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds in Book 15293, page 69, and being more particularly described in the attached survey as presented. And Ian, Ian, thank you for the challenging words here and numbers. Hopefully I didn't say any of them backwards, so please take it away.
You did fine. Ian Howsey, I'm the Director of Community Development for the city, and this is the last time you'll have to hear about this. I think that, I think you've done a good job here of, of making sure that this action that the city council is taking is, if necessary, would stand up in law. So I did want to review, in a court, just want to review some things. So you, this is taking a property by eminent domain, you're condemning the property and you're taking it, and you're taking it to abate the blight that it is. So we're talking about the Boiler Building at the International Woolen Mill. And there's a survey in your material for that. It's for remediating the environmental contamination, constructing a public parking lot, which also functions as a cap for that, and also for other public purposes as necessary. So I want to make sure you understand too that you're, you're not buying a pristine piece of property, you're not buying anything, you're actually taking it. There's, in your packet is a Phase Two environmental report and also a hazardous building condition assessment, which talks about the environmental contamination on that property. As required by law, in the order that you're going to take action on later, has describes the meets and bounds of the property. And then it also talks about the, the, there's a, there's an Exhibit A in there that talks about the, describes the property in a drawing. The order also talks about the owners of record of the property and how they've been notified. I have up on my screen, but you don't necessarily need to see it right now, it's called the return. I need to talk about with you just the notification, the law requires that we post this within seven days of this hearing. So this was published, excuse me, posted on a bulletin board on the first floor of City Hall, a bulletin board on the third floor of City Hall, Springvale Library Bulletin Board, Sanford Library Bulletin Board. And then it also has to be posted in the vicinity of the property in two places. We put that in four places. That's on the white man door on the east side of the building, a roll-up type garage door on the south side of the building, the northeast corner of the building, accessible and visible from the public parking lot, affixed to a sheet of plywood covering a window opening, and then also on a utility pole across the street from the intersection of the access road to the Boiler House property and on Heritage Crossing next to the Transformer Building of the International Woolen Mill, and then described in a latitude and longitude as well. These were placed, these were posted on October 23rd. And then additionally, this is a public hearing, so I'm speaking in favor and not only does the owner have the opportunity to speak at this hearing, the public at large does as well. We noticed the public hearing in the Waterboro Reporter on October 19th, October 26th and November 2nd. And this is not the first time the city council is talking about this, you've been discussing this at the city council meeting since October 3rd. You've had another public hearing about this same matter at your last meeting. And also Regco, that's how I would say that abbreviation, Regco Incorporated, has received the notices of these public hearings by regular mail and certified mail and also email. Those copies are provided to the city clerk and I've got them available for you tonight if you, if you wanted to know more about them. But that's, that's the, that's the requisite public hearing or what I'm going to make comments for in the requisite hearing. I can, glad to take questions now if you want, otherwise, if you have questions for me, you can address those under the actual order, under old business coming up.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for? Anyone to speak against?
Madam Mayor?
Diane, are you for or against?
I'm a little bit both.
Okay, here we go.
It's neither for or against.
Go ahead.
I just want to make some comments. Having been on the planning board for seven, eight years, I've done an awful lot of reading about this property. I can't say I know all of it, but I'm not necessarily against you taking the property, I think you should, okay? But what I worry about is two things. There was conversations in the past about stent and about the rat infestation. And how are you going to address that when all this comes down? My other comment is this. The planning board allows 250 feet notification to all residents surrounding this property. However, the land bank does not. And I think you should extend this to 250 feet because there's a lot of people that are going to be impacted with this. And that is my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else to speak against? Okay, I will close this hearing. And the next one, make sure I don't skip any. It's you again, Ian. It's a hearing to discuss the Community Development Block Grant for 2023 Special Projects Grant Program in the amount of $100,000 to fund assist to Habitat for Humanity to complete two homes in Sanford. Ian?
Yes, and I will just introduce this and the city's role in this. So this is under a category called Special Projects under the CDPG program for the state, that's Community Block Grant. This public hearing is required by, by the, by the federal law under HUD, under that program. Additionally, so it was advertised for that. In this case, the award is $100,000. It's, it's a pass-through from the city to Habitat for Humanity, as you described, of constructing two, helping construct two residential buildings on Five and Seven Allen Street. And so there is some administrative burden involved in this, where we have to do the public advertisements. The discussions I've had with DECD, the Department of Economic and Community Development, is that we're going to minimize the number of drawdowns and also is that we're going to minimize the number of drawdowns, and also they're going to be using these funds for materials only, so they're not paying for labor, so therefore, Davis Bacon doesn't apply. That minimizes substantially the administrative burden. The burden is to myself is administering it, and then also Aaron McMahon as the financial agent on doing the drawdowns. So I'm looking forward to working with Habitat for Humanity again, and just be aware that there's a new funding stream as well that sometimes comes into play, and this is one time. And are you there for Habitat for Humanity? Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't recognize you, Amy. So Amy Nucci from Habitat for Humanity, their Executive Director, would like to make some comments as well.
Okay, thank you. And I imagine this is for, in favor?
I just first want to say thank you to Ian for all of his help throughout this application process. It has been a greater burden on him than on Habitat, and I definitely appreciate how quickly he's moved this through. I wanted to give a little context to the impact of this funding on Habitat. We've been building affordable homes since 1985. For about the first 25 of those years, we are an all-volunteer organization, completing one home every year, every two years. In the past 10 years, we've managed to increase our capacity to completing an average of two homes a year. But given the current housing climate and the need for all kinds of affordable housing, we are working to double our capacity to four homes by 2026. We know there are multiple steps we have to take to get there, one being looking at different building methods to increase our efficiency. We just completed a modular home on Normand Avenue, which is enabling us to compress our timeline without adding construction staff overhead, so that's been successful and something we look forward to duplicating on Allen Street for one of the structures. We've moved our Restore, which is our most significant funding source, into a permanent location in Kennybunk that has frontage on Route One and a larger sales floor, and we're already seeing historic sales in that location. And a third piece of our strategy is to be increasing and diversifying our funding revenue, which is why we're here tonight. We know to do more, we need to find new revenue sources, CDPG being one of them. And as Ian said, that funding is going to support the construction of two homes on Allen Street. We're projecting those homes to be completed in summer of 2024, the first one sooner, probably in spring of 2024. And we're really excited that those homes are going to be sold, one to current Sanford residents who have lived in the city for 10 years, and then the other households used to live in Sanford, and they're looking forward to coming back to Sanford. So we're very excited about that. They will be sold, those households are low income, we work with households earning up to 60% of the AMI. So we just, again, thank the city and Ian for your partnership on this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about our program or these houses.
Okay. Thank you. And the council may have some questions during the next, under New Business. All right. So I'm going to close, oh, first, anybody else for? Anyone else against? All right, I'll close this hearing. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And under the consent agenda, we have the two cannabis places. We have a game, this is one you might not have seen yet, the Game of Chance for Sanford Lodge Elks, 1470 and 13 Elm Street of Sanford, Maine. And then also, there's an application for Bingo. So if there is no counsel against any of this or wants to speak any of these, I will just push these forward as approved. All right. Thank you. Under Old Business, Consent Agenda is one of my favorite. I get to just push those four things right through. So here we go. Under Old Business, in order to condemn and take certain blight property known as the International Woolen Mill Boiler Building and adjacent blight land, including a portion of tax map parcel J 2924 and J 2925, for the purpose of abating the blight remediation, environmental contamination, and constructing a public park facility and for other public purposes pursuant to 30A MRS sections 3101 and 23MRS section 3023. Ian?
I'd like to add just two things that I neglected to include. So we have had the property appraised, and the values come back at less than zero. So that's complete as well. I can respond to Diane Connolly's questions about extending a notification to 250 feet. I think that's a perfectly reasonable request, and I'm sure we can accommodate that. And then additionally, the most important part about why you're taking this action is that we're applying for a cleanup grant from the EPA, so that'll be your next couple of actions here. And we're applying for $5 million. The voters already passed a $1 million bond, and we're hoping to complete that within the $5 million grant to allow, to keep funding to be able to construct a parking facility. So the requirement of the grant is the property must be owned by the city at the time of the application, and the application due date is Monday. So the order that you sign tonight will be recorded in the Registry of Deeds tomorrow morning.
Any questions? Sure. You want to make a, go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, so I'd like to move that we take the condemned or condemn and take the certain blighted property known as the International Woolen Mills Boiler Building mainly for construction of public parking, demolish that and put in a public parking facility and potentially other purposes.
Can I have a second? Ian?
I will second that, Madam Mayor.
And now, any questions? Nate?
Not a question. I just wanted to say, you know, before we go to vote, that, you know, I think all of us here, at least I would hope everyone here, doesn't take eminent domain lightly. I mean, this is taking someone's private property that they've, you know, they've purchased, and it is a power that we have as a city, local, federal governments. But I appreciate all the work that's gone into looking into this, and that, you know, I think hopefully this will be something that's better for the city. I just want to comment that, you know, when it comes to eminent domains, not something we should all take lightly.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving right along, we're going under New Business now. In order to authorize apply for the US EPA Brownfield Cleanup Grant for the International Wool Mill Boiler House Sanford, Maine site, a portion of the tax map parcel J 2924 and J 2925. Ian?
So I think we're planning on, this is seeking your approval tonight to apply for the grant. So I'm working on that grant. The next one on the item, the list there, the Community Wide Assessment Grant, I hit the submit button during the City Council meeting earlier, so that one's in at this point. And this next one, the ground, the Cleanup Grant, that's a $5 million grant. Charlie Springer is here from TRC if you had any questions about specifics of the grant. Again, it's targeting the International Woolen Mill Boiler Building, and it's part of this series of actions tonight, including the eminent domain action to acquire the property.
So are we taking these two together, in order to authorize apply for the US EPA Brownfield Community Wide Assessment Grant? Are we taking those together?
You're welcome to. I don't see that there's any reason not to.
But they're two, okay.
We probably should take them individually.
No, I was asking him. So just let me, I just, let me finish with him. All right. Thank you.
I thought you were done, Mayor.
No, I just needed to clarify it with him what he was expecting. All right. So we'll do the first. Does anyone have any questions on this of the other person before we take a motion?
I think we asked quite a few questions last night.
I think we did too.
Yeah, and he's confident he's going to get the grant, so.
Okay, so could I have a motion, please?
Pressure.
Pete?
Yeah, I motioned to go forward and authorize taking the certain blighted property known as International Woolen Mill Boiler.
But we already did that one.
I think we're on the grant one.
Oh, on the grant one? Yes, I thought it was the same thing, so. Let's go for the grant. I, do it.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
There we go. All those in favor?
I'll second it.
All right. Good. Now for the next one, in order to authorize apply for the US EPA Brownfield Community Wide Assessment Grant. Ian, do you have anything else to say on this one?
So this is a-
Besides, you've already really applied.
This is an assessment grant that's, it's $500,000 usable in anywhere in the community, and this is an economic development tool. What was listed in the grant is facilities or buildings in the International Woolen Mill area, so the International Woolen Mill itself, 72 Emory Street, which you've been discussing tonight regarding certain marijuana licenses that were issued, and then also the WASCO building in the back. So that's what's been listed as priority areas, but we've used this, these funds in this last cycle for the Courtney Cleaners property, which the fire, which was purchased for the fire department. Also, we're working through closing out the Alexson's Cleaners property at this point, and others that I'm not remembering right now.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion, please? Ian?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a plan for a US EPA Brownfield Community Wide Assessment Grant.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Nate, thank you. Okay, we got through that one, okay? All those in favor? All right, great.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Could I just make summary comments? So most of us here in this, we've got a decade into the Boiler, Boiler House as a singular standalone issue. So if the public thinks this has been a short discussion tonight, there's a decade worth of work in here. With all of the pieces finally coming into alignment, the ability to take it by condemnation and appreciate the comment about the exercise of eminent domain, this is, this is a corporation that its only asset is the buildings that are sitting there, for which this is a $5 million liability that you're going to take off the backs of that corporation such that the remaining portions are more developable, and also all of those properties that are in a close proximity and neighborhood to this. So for the first time, we've been able to come forward with a plan to exercise the condemnation simply because, not simply, but because for the first time, the funding has been there, and it's viewed as potentially a one-time funding source for that, to that degree of magnitude. So the plan is finally aligned, there's a decade worth of work in here, you're pulling the trigger, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Steve. All right. I guess we should be proud of ourselves then. All right. Okay, the next one, in order to approve the consolidation of the three city wards to one, and to approve the consolidation of the three voting places to one, and direct the city clerk to submit the required application to the Secretary of State for approval and ward consolidation and change of voting places. The location of the new voting place is to be Veterans Memorial Gym, 678 Main Street, Sanford. Okay, do I have a motion on this? Bob?
So I'll move that we approve the consolidation of the three city wards into one.
I'll second that.
And we've got a motion and a second, and now discussion. All right, Pete?
Yeah, I think that we should table this till we can all sit down and have a work study on this. I don't want any disabled waiting at one place. I don't want anybody losing votes, Democrat, Independent, or Republican. I don't want people walking away. I would think that if we did, if we closed one poll and did two, I think we should see that first before a presidential election, before going down to one, because I see a disaster. And I know you know your stuff, and I'm not knocking anything, I just, I'm getting a lot of feedback, and everybody's worried about losing voters, people waiting.
Okay, Pete, I'm going to stop you right there for just a second where you use the word "table."
Table.
And I need to know procedural things. Steve, when somebody says they want to table something, does all discussion stop?
It does. You take that motion up.
Take-
Well, you'd have to make a motion, a motion to table.
That's, is that what you're saying? Because I want to make sure, okay.
I'll second that.
Yes, I'm definitely asking motion to table.
The motion's approved. You can have another motion.
You can.
We have to vote on the original motion?
No, if we don't, if we don't approve the table, then we go back to the original. All right, good. So all those in favor of, we've got a first and a second, all those in favor of the tabling So four, all those against, three. So it's tabled. Now do we, now that it's tabled, we don't go back to the original motion, is that correct?
Correct.
No? Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. In order to approve road closures and routes for the Holidays Parade on Friday, December 1st, 2023, as presented. And Brady, I see you on the air. Go ahead.
Hello. After having our safety meeting with Police, Fire, Public Works, and Alex from EMA, the route and lineup area are selected for the Holidays Parade. We are looking to line up on Emerson Street this year and then go south on Shawman Ave. If we need more streets, we'll use West Elm Street, and this will get us off a school street. Last year was kind of congested. And then the parade will go north on Main to Siding Nacious. And yes, Friday, December 1st, parade will start at 5:30, followed by the tree lighting right around 6:15, once the parade gets there and everybody gets situated.
Brady, could you do me a favor and let everybody know also as part of your presentation what the requirements are to get paperwork and stuff to get to you if, to be a part of the parade?
Yes. The deadline, I'm saying a soft deadline is we're asking everything to be in by the 21st of November, that's before offices close for Thanksgiving. Anything that comes in over the weekend, we'll, we'll accept if it all works out come that following Monday, but they need a valid driver's license, insurances, proof of registration. If they're an organization, they need a COI, and then proof of auto insurance as well, plus the $25 fee.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
I motion to accept the parade route and associated documents.
Okay. And Pete, you're second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Pete's really good at the second name.
Thank you. It happens to me a lot. In order to accept and approve the city's financial report for the first quarter of the fiscal year 2023, 2024, Ronnie, come on down.
She knew she would be late.
Okay, have Steve put you on an agenda during a time we don't have, some things that could be volatile.
Mayor Brink, City Councilors, I'm Ronnie Champlin, Finance Director for the City of Sanford. I'm pleased to provide you the quarterly budget reports for the period of July 1st through September 30th of this fiscal year. This report offers a high-level summary of figures and insights highlighting both revenue and expenses during this quarter. During the first quarter of the fiscal year, the city's budget remained on a steady course, balancing our commitment to providing essential services with responsible fiscal management. Our revenue highlight is that total revenues collected for this quarter amounted to $24 million. Revenues exceeded budget expectations by 17%. This primarily due to timing and stronger-than-anticipated tax revenue collections. Some of the major revenue categories in their performance compared to budget for the first quarter are as follows. Personal property tax was budgeted at $2.1 million, and to date, we've collected $1.1 million, or 53.4%. Real estate taxes were budgeted at $34 million, and to date, we've collected 49%, or $17 million. We budgeted $5 million for revenue sharing, and to date, have collected 1.3. Automobile excise tax, we budgeted $3.9 million, and to date, we collected $1 million. Ambulance fees, we budgeted $1.5 million. Ambulance fees, we budgeted $1.5 million, and to date, have collected $326,000. The review of the expense analysis found that our total expenses for the quarter totaled $8.4 million, demonstrating that expenses were within the budget limits at 22%, reflecting that the quarter was under budget by 3%. Also included in your backup are personnel costs. We call that the wage report. The wage report for personnel costs represents all costs for full-time, overtime, part-time, holiday sick, and allowances. Of the $16.3 million budgeted, we are at 24.8% expended with a three-month target of 25%. However, with that being said, we continue to monitor overtime closely, especially in our three larger departments. The police department is currently at 69.5% expended. The Sanford Regional Communications Center is at 37.7% expended, and the fire department is at 50% expended. Again, with a target of 25% used at the end of the first quarter, we continue to monitor these three departments weekly. For the first quarter of the year, there were operating expenses in departments that were over 25% used and had expenditures that exceeded appropriations at the end of the quarter. I'm going to just name a few. County tax, we budgeted $893,000, and to date, the balance is zero. That is because payment was made to York County on August 25th for the county tax bill, paid in full. The general assistance budget is $414,000, and to date, there's a remaining balance of 75% expended, or $102,713 available. The rec cost will be reimbursed, as you know, at 70% from the state of Maine. Of the $300,000 budgeted in non-contract services, $262,000 has been spent alone in the first quarter. In the insurance and property and casualty line, we budgeted $221,000, and as of today, there's a remaining balance of $90,000. As you know, we pay MMA twice a year for our property and casualty insurance, once in July and then again another payment in January. So this is due to the timing of our semi-annual payments. The next department is information systems. They budgeted $541,000 a share, and they have a remaining balance of $367,000, or 32% expended in the first quarter. That's due to contracted services and timing of his payments. Recreation to budget, has a budget of $656,000. They're showing 31% expended in the first quarter because, as you know, part-time wages for summer staff have already been paid in July, August, and September. The last department I want to mention is the city council. City council has a budget of $87,000 as, and as of today, as of the first quarter, they're 29% expended, and that's just due because of contract services for the Town Hall Streams contract was paid in July. And under software for the Granicus software, there was a price increase this year that's already been paid. I'd like to just reference general assistance again. General assistance, the non-contract services line of $300,000 is already 87.5% expended and over budgeted by $59,000 as of November 1st. Currently, the monthly expenses for the first quarter for GA has been $87,000 for July, $75,000 for August, and $99,000 for September. If these direct costs continue as anticipated, we expect to spend over $1 million for general assistance in this fiscal year. 70% will be reimbursed from the state of Maine, and $300,000 is what is currently budgeted in the general assistance non-contract services line. I did include the monthly general assistance state reimbursement report in my backup for your review. But to summarize the September state report, 78 applications were processed, 65 cases were paid, for a total number of 157 people seen. 76% of the assistance provided in September was for housing alone. The City of Sanford spent $818,000 in fiscal year '23 for general assistance, and we were reimbursed $580,000 from the state. The balance came from $155,000 that was budgeted, and the remaining shortfall of $82,000 came from the unexpended funds in other departments. As we move forward in this fiscal year, we're not anticipating unexpended funds like we have seen in previous years due to staffing shortages. Therefore, we'll be recommending on a future council agenda to adjust the expenditure and revenue lines for general assistance. The recommendation at this point would increase expenses by approximately $900,000 and increase the state revenue seat for general assistance by $630,000. And we request, and we would request the use of the fiscal year '24 overlay in the amount of $390,000 to cover any shortfall. In conclusion, this quarterly report for July through September reflects a city that remains dedicated to sound fiscal management. We are committed to making data-driven decisions and prudent financial planning to ensure the continued well-being of our community. Thank you.
Right. May I have a motion to accept her report, please? Ian?
So move, Madam Mayor.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, all those in favor? Oh, Steve?
Not a question, but further comments on the general assistance. Continue to analyze and drill this down. So the extraordinary expenses we experienced for the last fiscal year occurred in May and June. We'd had very high expenditures prior to that, but the May and June was the asylum seekers coming to our community, hitting our general assistance for the first time that we'd never experienced before. That being said, the current fiscal year budget that we're in was already adopted at that time that the asylum seekers hit us in May and June. So we didn't anticipate, because that budget was already adopted. So now that we've got basically two months in the prior fiscal year, plus a quarter in, we're better, better able to analyze that. Some of those costs that are in this fiscal year that we're seeing on the GA side, on the asylum seekers, did sift forward from the prior fiscal year in that some of the emergency housing vouchers didn't come through and hit our books until this fiscal year. Same thing with food vouchers. Those are still coming through from last May. The food vouchers are just now coming in and being cashed out, so those are hitting our books currently. So there are some extraordinary costs in there. Other elements we recognize in there is that as the asylum seekers obtain work permits, which two families have, they, they will predictably come off from the general assistance roles because they no longer qualify for general assistance. And that's, that's the difficulty. Once somebody has something, there is nothing. If somebody has nothing, there is virtually everything. So looking at, if we isolate just the expenditures in the first quarter, year-to-date, for our resident Mainers, we would, we would come under budget for the year as what was budgeted for and predicted. But again, we never predicted the asylum seeker families to be on our general assistance. And that's an earlier statement that, that I made that was given as a recognition to the office of new Mainers that general assistance was not designed for, nor was it ever anticipated to carry that burden. There needs to be a separate examination of that at the state. So we just received notice today, I didn't, I haven't even seen it yet, but I discussed it with Vicky Martin, our director that's here earlier, and Ronnie Champlin, our finance director. We just received a non-notification, we received $54,000 to offset general assistance costs, without explanation as to what the formulation was or exactly what it's for and such and that, so we'll be exploring that. Yeah, no, don't look me up. This isn't, this isn't new from the state. Something will just show up and finance will put it out to all the offices. Whose is this? What is it, right? It just shows up without explanation. So we'll, we'll drill down into that. If it's a one-time, if we expect to see that again for some, some unknown reason to us, very appreciative of $54,000 falling in our laps unexpectedly, but it doesn't begin to scratch the surfaces to the impacts that we're seeing. So that's just a further explanation of why we were unable to anticipate this in this budget that's currently adopted, and why we're going to need to look for, I believe it's going to be a net expenditure increase of about $270,000, for which there's sufficient overlay there to cover it. I've never been in a situation where I had to go and ask a council to adjust a budget in an unbalanced manner. So the overlay is there for those kind of unaccounted circumstances, and beyond that, you would have to look at using reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had a motion and a second, so all those in favor of accepting Ronnie's report? Thank you very much. All right. And now we have a proclamation naming November, wait, my, is my note right? 25th? 25th, not 20, 26, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in Sanford. And more, if you would please do with the honors of reading that?
I will, Madam Mayor. Whereas the government of Sanford, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses, businesses are responsible for 67.2% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday 2022 made them want to shop and dine at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas, Sanford, Maine supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed a Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the city council of the City of Sanford, Maine, does hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. On behalf of the city council of the City of Sanford and Village of Springvale, and it will be signed by Becky Brink, the mayor of Sanford.
All right, and do we have to have a motion, stuff to accept this? No. Just a proclamation. Okay, thank you. All right, the next, in order pursuant to 23 MRSA Sections 30252, accept dedication made by, and I'll probably get this name wrong, Tenori Properties LLC, of title and fees sample in a strip of land known as Patriots Lane, as shown on plan showing a subdivision site survey of Route 109 Apartments Phase 2, prepared by Gala Construction Company, Inc., dated May 12th, 2003, revisited July 1st, 2003, surveyed by Cornpost Land Survey, Inc., and recorded at the York County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 282, page 33, bound and described more specifically in the warrant deed from Toronto Properties LLC. I don't know what this next thing, in parentheses, SIC, to the town of Sanford dated January 12th, 2012, and recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds Book 16242, page 762, and to accept and establish a cityway on said strip of land. All right, I think, do we have Matt Hill as reporting out on this?
No, I don't see Matt, so I can report out on this.
Okay.
The history on Patriots Lane is that pursuant to the plot plans that were accepted by the city, excuse me, there was a request to the then-town back in November of 2007 to accept said way. At that point in time, city engineer and public works director Charles Andreessen, along with assistant city engineer Mike Cassely, wrote memos back in 2007 recommending that the town accept Patriots Lane because it had been constructed pursuant to the plot plan and as per standards at that time. A deed was prepared in 2007 to transfer ownership of that way from Tenori Properties LLC, but the deed was never recorded. The deed was finally recorded by the parties in interest, including the city, in 2012, noting that the original 2007 was never recorded. Pursuant to all of those actions, we find in, in the record that the town council and city council has never actually taken the vote to accept that property. Yet we've obtained maintenance and been doing the maintenance since the deed was recorded, or deed was prepared in 2007. So to pursuant, in order to conclude these transactions and close that up, that loophole of not missing the vote, we had consultation with our legal counsel reviewing all of this documentation, and we were taking the requisite actions to date. And the last of that action is for the city council to vote and accept said way. During the further discussion on this, we note that there are some elements that are, would not be accepted by the current book of standards that are there, but what I would recognize is that we should look at establishing a tax increment financing district around this such that there is a, there's 85-plus more units known to be coming in there. It would give you the opportunity to capture the value of those new units over and above the value that's already there and be prepared to make improvements in the future if you so choose to put sidewalk, a sidewalk on one side of the street, which would put in enclosed drainage and other such structures in recognition of the significant amount of private investment that's come in there for housing. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. We discussed this at property, and I think that was the biggest concern on our part, is the added units. I don't think, I think we understood that it was upon us to, to take on Patriots, but I think we had a, we know how many units are being added and how it's created a dangerous situation without a sidewalk, and that's how the sidewalk has come up, where, you know, it'd be nice to put it there. It might be difficult because of the drainage systems. That's hopefully a goal of ours, is to get it to be safer to go down Patriots.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
A second? Pete?
I'll go second.
Okay, okay, we've got two characters down at the end of the table here. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. In order to authorize apply for the Community Development Block Grant for 2023, a special projects grant program of the amount of $100,000 to fund assistance to Habitat for Humanity to complete two homes in Sanford. Ian?
Do you have any more questions?
Okay, well, let's take a, we'll motion and then a second then if there's any questions. So a motion. Ian?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Jonathan, thank you. Any questions? Ian?
Ian, you had shared that there was some administrative burden and acknowledgement was given to the time you've put into this. Is there any allocation for administrative fees as part of the $100,000 grant, or does 100% of that go to Habitat for Humanity? I missed if there's any administrative fee.
There isn't any administrative fees.
Okay.
I was considering it, but noticing, for example, the cost of advertisement, those kind of things. But that, that cost at this point is borne by the city.
Okay, it's a good investment, I see, but I was curious. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, John?
And I just had a clarifying question. It sounds like this is just a pass-through. There's no any additional cost to the taxpayers for this project?
That's right.
It's just approval to accept the grant and be able to move it, use the money.
Because, yeah, it's interesting, Jonathan, there are a lot of grant opportunities and they all have to pass through the city. But they're, they're actually available for other organizations more than they are for the city. Unfortunately, the city is not a direct receiver of CDVG. If we were, we'd get a nice pool of money all to ourselves every year. But instead, we have to compete at the state level, and they have to go through the city in order to compete as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, especially for the people watching, as it might not have been clear, but.
It did include in the memo, just a comment there that, that the administrative burden is, is offset by the benefit to Sanford. So those, that $100,000 is, is being invested in Sanford.
Yeah, I'm definitely supportive of getting a few additional houses in Sanford.
Thank you. Steve?
So I'd like to recall, how many units Habitat for Humanity has done here in Sanford to date?
Well, I'll guess, but I'm sure Amy can answer that. Let's see, I can total them up. Kirk Street, she mentioned Nass, Nassau, did you say?
Norman.
Norman, thank you. And then you've got a couple properties in ownership and in the works, so 3 Beaver Hill Road, 57 Allen Street. And I think that's what you have of the properties that the city sold you.
Yeah, there's, there's at least one. I know, and I should have checked this before I came, I know there's at least one duplex that we probably completed over 20 years ago as well. And so that's four units that are complete, and then we have potential for at least four, hopefully more, units, including those two Allen Street homes.
So I just, I wanted to make that point for the high-quality urban infill projects.
that you've been doing, partnering with the city on addressing distressed properties through rehab and or building on lots that had distressed properties on those, not different than Five and Seven Allen Street for us here. And I just wanted to recognize you as an extremely high-quality, silent partner. You just do the work, you get it done, and we never hear anything from you. I so appreciate that. So I just wanted to point that out, so thank you very much.
Well, we believe in infill lots and look for those opportunities.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Oh, do you have a question?
More of a comment. I just wanted to maybe give a little bit of a fun fact, that my sister is a recipient of a Habitat home in New York County. She actually received the Kate Porpus House, the second one, right before you moved to Sanford. So as we've all been talking a lot, there's been, there's a great need for housing in Sanford, so thank you for coming in and helping build homes. And just a little interesting note, that I have a little bit more of a direct connection to Habitat for Humanity than most people probably know, so.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second, so all those in favor? Thank you very much. Let's move on. In order to notice, in order to notice the proposed vacation of portions of unbuilt and unacceptable ways in a subdivision known as Wormwood Park, and schedule a hearing on the matter at the December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three City Council meeting. Ian?
Okay, these are, this is a very arcane activity that this is talking about. I do want to let you know first that there was a petition to close a section of Coolidge Street, that portion's between Harding and Putnam, on this plan. And then also included in your packet, when reviewing the subdivision, this Wormwood Park also found that Granite Street is, was always unbuilt, so that that would be vacated as well. And then also a section of Myrtle Street, and that there's, it appears is just a very small little square behind some people's property. And so the requirements on this is that every single property owner in the subdivision needs to be noticed, including the mortgage holder. I think that's about fifty properties, so done the deed research to do that. You can note that someone seeking a vacation can do it themselves. They can do this activity by themselves in the Registry of Deeds and file these notices. There's a process for this, as the notice that you'll be signing tonight talks about that, that it takes about a year, and then you're required to submit a claim within a hundred and eighty days to the court to challenge that vacation. There's no risk for the city council or the city on this. It's just the initiation of the process. The city council sets the damages as well, so in this case, each of these are listed as zero. And then also for the city's time in doing this on behalf of the petitioner, they're being charged three thousand five hundred dollars. So that's covering the cost of the advertisements, my time in doing the deed research, and also doing the notification processes. So to let you know that this is, this has been charged. They've submitted a retainer at this point, and we will send out these notices. Our legal counsel recommended that we hold a hearing on this. It's not noted as a public hearing, but just a hearing, so we don't have to hear from everybody, but just people that have interest in the subdivision, and set that hearing date for December nineteenth, so the city council meeting then. So if you authorize to proceed tonight, it's basically, you're authorizing to proceed with noticing that this street is proposed for vacation, and then on December nineteenth, you'll be ordering the vacation in time for the holidays. And that vacation, maybe, so anyways, in honor of the last agenda item tonight.
Okay. Well, using the word vacation in there is a very unusual term. Kind of threw me when I was reading it, it's like, it just doesn't make sense.
Plenty of jokes you can make about it.
All right, do I have a motion? Maura?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Close enough. Second, Nate?
I'll second.
Perfect. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do we, do we have any member comments? Pete?
I have two comments.
We have stuff that needs to be signed, Bob. You want to, wait a minute. Okay.
I say, I'm gonna say something that I'm, I'm leaving now.
All right, Pete?
This is going out to Teresa Erickson. She's a friend of mine. Her husband, David, passed away yesterday morning, very unexpected. He's a good guy, a good veteran, good pillar to the community, and it's going to be a loss. And my heart goes out to you, Teresa, and I'm so sorry. On a lighter note, all of us, we have, we have a fan, with permission from her mother, little Lily Dwyeran, she watches us on city council. She's school age. I think this is amazing. So Lily, I'm telling you, I would like to give you a tour of the city hall if you ever want to come down, have your mom bring you, and I'll, I'll give you a whole tour. So we always encourage the children, and that's pretty awesome. So Lily, you made my day. Thank you.
Anyone else? Maura?
Just a couple things. I just want to remind everybody, Veteran Day events are always, no matter what day it is, on the eleventh day of the eleventh month, at the eleventh hour, it is a simple one-hour ceremony at the Memorial Gym. It was, it was a little sad last year, it was a very low turnout. It is not on the day that they give people off for a long weekend. It is on the eleventh, so it is on Saturday. I encourage my fellow counselors, if they're able to come, to come along. It is an hour. It does not take very long at all.
Those, I think I've got three that are going, and they want you, like it's, you're going, Jonathan, and was it Nate?
Just meet out front.
Yeah, and they actually have you march in.
Yep.
So that's why they want you there at ten-thirty.
We walk in, there is no audience, there's a band. It's, I wish more people would go and take the time. It's an hour to remember people who have, you know, served our country, so, the current and the ones who've lost their lives. So it's very, very simple ceremony. And then the other thing I was going to mention, I was looking at something on Facebook, and I noticed that the high school has increased the number of Thanksgiving food baskets are going to be putting together from like sixty families to seventy-seven. I suspect churches in the community are seeing the same increase. So if you're able to find an organization who's doing, who's collecting food, putting together baskets, find an organization that's doing that and make a donation yourselves for Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anne?
I just wanted to share congratulations to the incumbents that were all re-elected. Very excited to work with you for another year. And also want to mention that, and Keith, our executive director of the Growth Council mentioned this earlier, but in case folks mentioned it, the Sanford Growth Council and Friends of Downtown are really excited about the upcoming Small Businesses, Small Plates, which means Great Snacks, and Big Conversations event, which is next Thursday, the sixteenth, at six P.M. And again, some really great resources will be available, as well as just networking and connecting with other small businesses. You can RSVP on the Facebook page or to F O D, for Friends of Downtown, at stronger sanford.org. Thank you.
Jonathan?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone that came out to vote this week, and for the vote of confidence, I'm continuing to serve Sanford and Springvale, and I'd also like to congratulate our other incumbent city councilors. It's been great working with you, and I look forward to working with you for a while longer. So thank you.
Fantastic. Anyone else? All right, and do we have any future agenda items, Maura?
Obviously, we have to take tonight's table agenda items. So I'm just going to throw out, think long and hard before you table an item until we've had some discussion, so we know where we're going. Tabling it from the get-go without having some initial discussion is really kind of shortchanging the topic. That's all I'm going to say. Tabling it after that discussion, I would fully understand, but I think a little bit of discussion would have gone a long way to seeing where we were before we have to schedule another meeting. So that's kind of what I'm throwing out, because now we have to figure out, okay, do we discuss this at Subcommittee, which it's already done, which many of you might not be at? Do we schedule a workshop to discuss it? Or do we just come back to this exact same forum and have the discussion we could have had tonight? So think long and hard before you table something prior to having at least an initial conversation. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. Any other future agenda? Anne?
I have two things I want to mention. One, and I'm not sure if anybody's amenable to this conversation, but wondering if it's worthwhile discussing the January meeting schedule. It is a five-week month, and we just talked about earlier tonight, there's lots of people on vacation, but maybe we should look at pushing it to the second and fourth Tuesday, which would be the ninth and the twenty-third, as opposed to the second, which we're all kind of recovering from vacations still.
Except we're all still here.
Right. So I just want to put that out there. And then the other item, and I hope I described this well, I think it's for discussion at Property Subcommittee, and I want to reiterate, it's really just discussion purposes, but issue was brought to my attention with the local farmer's market about the use of parks when an, so basically, this is a little bit legal jargon maybe, but there's concern about the use of city parks when an organization or person holds an event permit to use that space, and another party interferes with the kind of quiet enjoyment of that existing permit holder. So there were some issues this summer with the farmer's market not feeling like they had uninterrupted or, you know, full enjoyment of the park, apparently. So I'd like to bring that to Property Subcommittee for further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Jonathan?
Thank you. I've had a couple comments around the Rotary, and I've brought it up, and I know we had someone earlier, so I think it would be helpful to have just a report out on where we are and what the timing looks like.
It's already on the agenda for next time.
For next time? Okay. All right, thank you.
I like being one step ahead. Not too often I can do that. All right. Anyone else?